Now called to order, I would ask you to please stand. And trustee Dick Johnston will give us the invocation followed by the pledge of the flag.
Our very heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us as board members this morning, that we do the work in the way that you would have us to do, and be with the staff that's going to be assisting us, so that this college can benefit from all of our knowledge, and give us that leadership that we need today. We ask that you be with all of us here that are here this morning. You will guide us, direct us in our lives this day and the week to come. We ask these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Very nicely said. Under the board chair's report, I have several items that I would like to go over. There's been a lot happening at the college. And I want to report on something which I attended a week ago Friday, and that was the Women on the Way luncheon. And what a magnificent event it was of achievement. It was very inspiring. It was to recognize the donors and the women who are part of the program. And several students spoke at the luncheon, and it was just tremendously inspiring to hear their stories. One woman spoke about coming to our college, and she in her was sight impaired. She legally blind, although she's able to see some, she could read big print, and she felt always stigmatized as a child, as the blind kid in school, and receiving special treatment. So when she came to St. Pete College, she didn't want to do that. And so she tried to fake her way through her first semester, and she couldn't do it, and failed. And she mentioned that. And beautiful girl, beautiful girl, and she talked about her low self-esteem. It's just, you know, very interesting that a picture often doesn't go with the person's story. And then she talked about how she got involved with Women on the Way, how she came back after an extended period away from the college, and that how she sought help, and how she's succeeding in now going for her bachelor's degree here at St. Petersburg College. I mean, it was just stories like that being shared, which if you have any heart at all, it couldn't help but to be touched by an event like that. Who else was here at the, who's here, was at the luncheon? Would any of you like to mention a comment about it? Yvonne, do you have any thoughts about it? It was such a touching event. It was magnificent, wasn't it? Anyone else care to say anything about the luncheon? Certainly.
Also, very nice. I'm a friend of Dave's.
Yes, and I had the honor of sitting at her table. What a delightful woman she is. And just very lovely lady. Well, good. And I appreciate y'all being there. I think it is definitely one of those inspiring events that makes you appreciate life when you leave there. It was just tremendous. Another event which I had the opportunity to attend was the, I think this was the first time this has been done, and under Dr. Law's leadership, we had a college-wide in-service day at the Clearwater campus. And it was, had a lot of energy there. All the career employees, the administrative employees, every employee of the college was there, and of course, the faculty. And I had sat through three sessions because we can't bring all the employees in one room at one time, we don't have a place big enough. Dr. Law met with the faculty, and then with the administrative employees, and then the career employees, I think was the three sessions. And the booklet was sent to you as part of your Friday packet of all the different breakdown sessions that they had. And some were more for employee benefits and things like that, where employee can find out more. Others were more college-related items. Some were the FGO, the Governance Association, had sessions for people could attend. And it was, it was an interesting event. Dr. Law, during each session, gave a talk which was geared towards the audience that he was addressing, but he left a lot of time for a question and answer period. And it was interesting to see how engaged the audience was each time in the question and answer period. There was no reluctance to ask questions, and that was good to see. They were very honest questions, and they were forthright, and you gave forthright answers to them. And it was, it was good to see and hear the concern to the faculty in the first one, which I attended, I attended too. I couldn't stay, I had to get back to my real job later in the day. But the faculty was concerned about a lot of issues. It was good to hear. Some of them, we've brought up in the past, the emeritus status for the retiring faculty, and how that works, the salary schedule, and how you move along from start to finish on the salary schedule. Obviously, class load size, office hours, and Dr. Law announced a, in cooperation with the Governance Association, a new program for office hours to basically recognize the changing world that students live in today, and how they go to see their faculty members not the same way we did when we were in college. And the administrative employees the same way with the, and I think you made the point, Dr. Law, and I really commend you on it, was the, how important they were as part of the process, that there's no separation between faculty, administration, career employees, that each one has to do their job to serve our students. And we're going to see a program about student success a little bit later on here in the report. But Dr. Law, would you care to comment? I also want to recognize Patty Jones, because she and her office were responsible for organizing the event. And Patty, you did a great job on this thing. The whole brochure and the setup, and I know the amount of seminars that were held took a tremendous amount of planning and time to do, and I want to thank you for your efforts there in coordinating the whole thing. Dr. Law, would you report further on that day?
Yes, I said I would take responsibility for the weather, and I did, my part came out really well. If they would handle the program. But I appreciate you, your recognition, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time and your presence there. It was a day where we were able to expand the communication. I just think, you see the smile on my face, people sharing across cameras, it's not so much hearing from the president, although that was part of the day, especially with a new president. But the sharing across all of our sites, and being with people who you may only speak to by phone or by email, and then putting names and faces together. And then lastly, our career employees who do such a good job for us, and who do it day in, day out, having a chance to share a table at lunch with the faculty, or other administrative personnel, or their colleagues from a different campus. So the whole ethos of sharing across, Patty and her staff did a great job. I can't tell you how rewarding it is for me to just show up and do my part, and everything ran like a fine watch for the day. People were still engaged, Mr. Chairman, at 3:00, 3:30 in the afternoon. So the people who came benefited, and we'll build on that going forward. So appreciate your.
Patty, would you care to make some comments on the day?
Just appreciate the fact that we were able to do this. We're yours who wanted to do it. We do it every year.
Excellent. Anyone else care to comment on the day? Because it was definitely a special day there. Ann, do you have any comments on it?
Oh, well, we really appreciate the fact that faculty had the opportunity to come together with not just the faculty groups, but various members of Student Affairs, as well as the career staff. And I heard of just many, many positive comments from the faculty about how they were invigorated by the day, and just found it very, very helpful, as well as an opportunity to grow professionally.
Okay. How about Earl Marine? Do you have any comments on the, extemporaneous speaking, Earl? I know you're good at that.
I'm not afraid to run to a microphone. No, I want to thank Patty as well. It was a great job getting folks together, and I talked to a lot of folks on the campuses, and people were genuinely pleased for being included, some for the first time. And faculty really enjoyed it. We worked with Dr. Cooper quite a bit, and we had quite a nice selection of breakout sessions, except for the one that I was in. That one was a little bit boring, but Dr. Oliver was there, he made it more enjoyable. But thank you very much, Dr. Law. It was a great day.
Thank you. Board member, do you have any questions concerning that event? It really was a great symbolic event, real event, in so many different ways. I just want to compliment the heck out of the college for having the event. The other item, and this I get to share with the board, and this, I have so much, you know, the sin of excessive pride here, but I think we'll be able to indulge ourselves with this for this year. Devron, and Evelyn and I, and Dr. Law had the opportunity to go up to the ACCT Congress in Toronto, and we received the Southern Region's Equity Award. And for our college to receive this is, there's probably not another award that I think we probably value more than this, and it's not because we got the award, but because of the actions of this college to make this happen. And we've come a long way at this college in the area of equity, and there's been a tremendous commitment by every person at the college. No person's exempt from being involved with our commitment to equity, and it's the right thing to do, whether it be the Women on the Way program, whether it be in our hiring practice, by the way we treat people, by the way we promote people, and help people succeed in every aspect, whether you're a student, a faculty member, part of the administration, a career employee, or a member of the community. And that's what this award recognizes, the opportunity that we give to people. So, board members, this is our college's award, and I just want to say thank you to all the staff that were involved in the writing of our entry for this award, but more important, every staff person who was involved in, this is, this is an award, although it's a little award, it goes, there's a piece of this that goes to every single person in this room and every part of the college family for helping to make this happen. So congratulations to us for this Equity Award. Devron, would you like to make some comments about the whole event?
No, I think it was a great thing, and I think, you know, the work had been done here at the college. It's nice to get that award, but the people in this room are the people that should have been there and should have been rewarded, because you guys do a great job every day to make sure that we're diverse, and that we do, that we do things a little bit differently and make sure that we're inclusive. So you should pat yourselves on the back.
Evelyn, would you like to make a comment?
Well, I have to give credit to everyone that works here. It's a great organization, a great faculty, and everyone that's involved did this.
Bill?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I do need to say, I thought you were, although extemporaneous particularly eloquent, the journey for this college is a long one, to that moment on the stage for that recognition. And it predates me, and it predates you, and it predates most everyone here. But taking that past and moving to that moment seemed to me to be worth the time to recognize. So I appreciate your comments and your historical perspective. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I would like to say, this award was presented entirely in front of the entire Congress at a general session. This was not some subsection of the group, which just a few attended. This was the entire Congress of over 1,200 people were there at this session, and St. Petersburg College's name was flashed great big on the video boards, and it was a good moment for our college, but it was a better moment just for what's been accomplished over the many years. So thank you. Board members, this is your chance for any reports that you have, or items that you would like to call to the attention of the board. Devron?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Today I have a special guest with us, Mr. Chair. Her name is Valice Long. I attended a Junior Achievement Luncheon, I was invited by my good friend Ronnie Duncan. Valice, would you come up? I'd just like for her to share her story. She was one of the speakers at this luncheon. I'd like her to share her story, but let me give you a little background on this student. She ranks 40 in a class of 434 at Clearwater High School, has a weighted GPA of 4.421. She's a dual enrollment student at the Clearwater Campus, has completed AP courses in honors Chemistry, History, Biology, and Geometry. And she's graduating in the fall, in the spring, I'm sorry, from St. Clearwater High School, and is interested in coming to St. Pete College. Valice, welcome.
Thank you. One Sunday afternoon, my dad and brother went fishing off the Courtney Campbell Causeway, something they enjoyed doing together. My dad got high and decided to take a dive off the side of the boat, when he cracked his skull on a rock. My brother watched as his body floated to the bottom of the water. He was rescued by Coast Guards and taken to St. Joseph Hospital, where he was left on life support for a week, but he didn't respond. He left my mom with five children to raise on her own. After he died, we had to move. It was hard to find anyone who would be willing to take all six of us in, because my mom refused to split us up. Finally, my great-grandma, who lived in a small, two-bedroom, one-bath duplex with my great-uncle and my grandmother, opened her home to us. It was either that or homeless shelter, so we moved in. There are only two beds in the duplex. My great-grandma and my great-uncle got those. The two short couches and the reclining chair in the living room were turned into beds for the seven of us. My mom got a job working at an assistant living facility. She barely slept because she would work double shifts and long hours to make extra money. She fixed dinner for us and get us ready for school and head back to work. This became her routine. My mother finally saved up enough money so that we could move to a house in Largo, where I attended Bowser Elementary School. I was very excited about going to school, but I started struggling with just about everything the teacher put in front of me. My fifth-grade teacher sat me down and told me the next year I would be in middle school. There will be no one there to baby you. The last grading period of fifth grade, I made honor roll for the first time. I was so motivated by it that I started working harder in class and earned honor roll throughout middle school. My mom has since changed jobs and was laid off from that job. I watched her struggle to pay the bills, keep food on the table, and clothes on our backs. There are many meals she would do without so that we can eat. Sometimes we brought sides home from our school lunch, such as apples and crackers, so that we would have something to eat. When I got older, to help my mom out, I got an after-school job so that I can contribute to the coming good of my family. Many children in my situation lose hope for their, lose hope and go astray. Drug dealers, murders, teen pregnancy, and stealing is the norm where I live. But my mom taught us to walk in faith, to work hard, and she stressed the value of a good education. But how was she going to put five children through college? My mom had a plan. Starting from sixth grade on, she placed us all in academic programs for tutoring, mentoring, and leadership. That's when I heard about Junior Achievement STEM Tech Program. I signed up. I've been involved in many programs, but nothing like JA. The program, sponsored by WorkNet Pinellas, engaged youth in work readiness and career exploration activities, and blended them with actual visits to businesses, so that we could check out different careers. Those qualified to participate came from low economic backgrounds and had to have a barrier in their education or employment, like my fellow participant Courtney, who dealt with her problems by running away from home. Billy, who was in a foster home because his relatives used the money that the state gave them to buy expensive luxury items for themselves. Our Junior Achievement mentors were inspirational. Ms. Dixon, Ms. Spencer, Mr. Manning, and Ms. Hasbini looked out for the best interest and went above and beyond what was expected to ensure everything was successful for our experience. From them, I learned how to write a resume, and how to handle an interview, which would help recognize my strengths so that I can sell myself on scholarship applications. But the two things that I benefited from the most was developing and understanding the value of teamwork and personal direction for my life. Junior Achievement kept us motivated by having numerous competitions, which engaged collaboration and team spirit. At the beginning of the camp, we were divided into groups, and each person was given a specific job. It would have been impossible to complete them on their own. We did interesting projects like building solar-powered cars and developed our own company using JA's Be Entrepreneur program. We got it all done by dividing up our tasks based upon everyone's strength. Since we all liked to text, we thought it would be nice to start a company for free texting. That's the way our company Flex Text was born. It would be a nonprofit business that would charge companies a fee to advertise their products over subscriber cellphones. My job was to write up the business plan and develop our financial projections for the next two years. My teammates then put it all into a PowerPoint presentation. But we wanted to stand out above the other teams that we were competing against, so we created a video commercial. The writing and acting was done by my teammates. I was the girl behind the camera. With our commercial, we won top prize. I am very proud of what we have accomplished. Going into JA's STEM Tech program, I thought I would be going to college to study business, but my JA volunteer, Ms. Bellamy, encouraged us to pick a career based on what we like doing, and not so much on how much money you can make. I really love anatomy and studying body parts, so I thought our jab-shooting experience to St. Petersburg College's prosthetic program in Mosey was very interesting. I was intrigued by the nerve reaction to trauma. These JA experiences were a turning point in my life, helping me to make my decision to pursue my dreams of becoming a neurosurgeon. Even though it's my senior year, I've decided to get a jump on my career. I am duly enrolled at Clearwater High School and St. Petersburg College, taking anatomy, physiology, physics, and cellular biology. Sounds like a lot, but I'm loving it.
Wow.
There would be times I would ask myself, why didn't I get a chance to know my father? Why did I go without on most birthdays and holidays? And why did I have to endure so much hardship? I think it's because I would be grateful for all the things in my life, and not so much as taking things for granted. It's not where you come from that matters, it's all about where you're going. Thanks to Junior Achievement, I know where I'm going. I'm excited about my future, and I hope other children like me have the same opportunity to experience this life-changing program. Thank you.
Good news, good news.
Ms. Long, I want you to stand right there for a second. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Cooper, Dr. Williams, Sandy, and all the staff that worked for me on getting this young lady here today. And Ms. Long, let me say this, on behalf of the president of this college, we're offering you a two-year scholarship to St. Petersburg College this morning. So you'll have that opportunity. Secondly, it is such an inspiration to see such a, you know, I saw you at that luncheon, and everybody in the room was in tears when you finished. But for what you've overcome, I know there's only greater things in the future for you. And I was just with our collegiate high school president yesterday saying that we have a responsibility of finding good students to come to this college, and you're exactly what we're looking for and what we need. So thank you. And I know some of the other board members may want to have a comment, and Dr. Law as well, so.
When we stop talking about what kids can't do, and we start watching what they can do, how come we're always surprised? Congratulations to you. Your story is worth sharing. I happen to have seen those Junior Achievement competitions, watched students do it, and they were worthy of all the pride that you demonstrate. We are delighted to support you in your quest. Tell your mother, please, that the only mistake she made was planning for five students, she only has to worry about four students now. If you'll send her our best regards as well.
I also want to congratulate you. I think you've really accomplished what you want to do in your life, and you have a goal, and being a neurosurgeon is a big accomplishment. Congratulations again.
Absolutely amazing. This is, it's going to be hard to continue on with this board meeting, talking about this other stuff, because this is the thing that I think everybody's going to walk out of here and remember, and I'm just, everybody is so proud of you, and I thank you, Devron, for making this happen. Much success, and what a great inspiration you're going to be to your younger siblings. What a great role model, and just amazing. Thank you.
You know, somehow or other, we need to clone you. Because as Terry just said, the role model, the path you've set for yourself, if that could be overlaid on other students, because there's probably a lot of other students out there that have a similar background to yours, that you'd be quite an inspiration to them, because you proved that you can do it, and you overcome all the odds. And if there was a way somehow to capture her in the blue and white, or even in a promotional film about this college, and to show people what can be done if the student really wants to, and if we're here to help them, they could do that much more.
Could we introduce, someone from Clearwater accompanied her? I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Stand up and introduce yourself. We're so proud of you as well. Everybody at the school should be.
I can hardly share the light with, I'm her assistant today, Mary Boynton, counselor at Clearwater High School. I was very proud of you.
Thank you.
And y'all haven't heard even the smallest bit of the tremains that she has gone through once when she ate by candlelight. Amazing person.
Thank you. I think that sums it up. You're an amazing person, and obviously, you're a tremendous inspiration. I think you've touched all of our hearts here today. I want to say, God bless your mother. What a wonderful woman she is. So, you know, it's time, or Thanksgiving's coming up, and thank God we have people like your mother, who show that type of love despite all the odds, and is pushing you to do the right thing, and your brothers and sisters. So we'll all say a prayer for your mother too here. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you very much.
Terry's right. How do we go on to the board meeting?
I think you better turn right now.
And thank you, Devron. That was an inspired idea there.
Well, it was easy to do, because as you can tell, look at the young lady, and look what she's accomplished, and with all the trials and tribulations that's gone in her life. But this is exactly the kind of student, when I called Dr. Law, I must admit, he's just the kind of student that we want here. We want to be recruiting these kind of students that are not only going to be successful, but, you know, that's what we have these programs for, Women on the Way, and the Black Male Initiatives, and all those programs. These are the types of students, and we want, if we want to really increase our minority students on campus, we also have to find people that are willing to go the extra mile. And I think this young lady has gone the extra mile, and will continue to do that. So thank you all as a board for taking the time out this morning and listening.
That's easy to do. Devron, I'd like to change, challenge you and Dr. Law to take this person, if she's cooperative and willing to do it, and maybe make a video film, so that it isn't lost and can be used for instructional and motivational purposes going forward, because her story, we've all heard it, and we know how it affects us, but suppose you have an incoming class of freshmen that really don't know where they're going. And I'm sure that this young student would not be available for every, speak to every class, but if we could capture her and use that as motivational for incoming students who had different privileges, and maybe haven't done as well, that it might encourage them to take that extra step and that extra effort and a couple more hours, and, because that, this is kind of peer pressure when it reverses.
Yeah, definitely.
She can film it, she can script it. She can do everything, but she can star in it? Do the whole thing?
She's multi-talented. Will pop, she's, the story's worth sharing, so thank you for the guidance.
And I hope we can help her, I know with the academic scholarship, but I hope we could help her with the book scholarship too, through the foundation, because when she mentioned the courses she's taking, those are the high-end book costs too. And I know that that's, I can't even pronounce those courses by a long pass. And I know that that's, I can't even pronounce those courses by a long answer. Quite impressive list of courses. Dick, do you have anything more on, I know you can't top with Devron's board report, but do you have any items that you would like to?
Well, I just had one item, and it's kind of, as Terry said, that the rest of it will all downhill from here. We went to Tallahassee last year to the FACC trustees' annual legislative conference, and we put together a van which took up trustees, and staff, and the president. And I would just like to put that in play as a possibility for this year.
I think we should do that.
Because it worked well to get us, most of us up there. Airlines to Tallahassee really are practical.
Are they too expensive?
And you've got a favorite space, a place to stop that we all like along the way.
That was terrible. The cheapest place you could find.
Well, whatever.
Did it like it?
No.
We'll get you a brown bag in Tallahassee.
Kim gave the thumbs up.
But I can maybe lead up to Dr. Law and then?
February meeting, this is early February.
February 2nd and 3rd.
During committee meetings, it's a great time for, during committee meeting week, unlike the, as Devron's left, but he certainly knows this, during legislative sessions, it's very difficult to arrange time with your legislators, especially if you're just there for a day. But during committee week, oftentimes, you have the chance to, they open up their offices and have time to talk with you. And so that's very helpful. And let's face it, we have three new delegation members in our delegation, so it's important that we visit with them, and it's, doing it as a group certainly helps. And just Sid, we have to make sure we public notice that, so we don't get in any trouble that we're going to be doing that.
He'll be gone. He doesn't care.
I do care. He still cares.
I will be gone.
But I just want to make sure we do that after we've learned from other examples around the state. But I was just saying, Devron, committee week's a good week to visit with our legislators because a lot, they generally open up their doors and have lots of time for us.
I'll be there, that's sure.
Okay? So if we can put that on our calendar, that'd be great. Terry, do you have any reports you would like to mention, please?
Yes, I would like to just acknowledge that last Friday, we had a fabulous luncheon at the Vinoye as kind of the final wrap-up for Florida International Museum. And I was there speaking on behalf of the college, about 250 people. And as many of you know, Florida International Museum, it's been around since '95, and a lot of discussion about how it was really the catalyst to kind of jumpstart the cultural and arts scene in St. Petersburg. And then through the entrepreneurial vision of Dr. Cutler and many here in this room, it was folded into the college's mission, and we've operated it for the last number of years. And it's come to a very fitting close. I think everybody recognizes the value of its 15 years in St. Petersburg and its recent association with the college. It was a great day, a lot of people to thank. Yvonne, would you like to share anything regarding that lunch?
I would say that, yes, it was a very great day, and I thought it was a great day to have you at the park and giving him a word. And I think all of the volunteers were volunteers.
Absolutely. Probably at least half of that 250 count were volunteers, and all of them were recognized. And it was a very good day, very good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you for representing the board at that function. It's definitely appreciated. Evelyn?
I just want to say that how inspired I am about women on the way. And I'm wondering, do we have men on the way?
Yes, we do. It's a very similar program.
I know we did.
Yes, we do.
I wonder how they're doing. We should get a report from them.
We certainly will. Let's put that down to do.
I just want to piggyback on the luncheon. It was a very good luncheon, it was very representative. And, you know, it was, I think that FIM really helped downtown grow up, especially, you know, after they did the movie for Titanic, the Titanic exhibit. I think Dick was a part of that then, right, Dick?
He was on the Titanic.
Yeah. He told me, you're the last survivor.
I get offed.
Women and children.
Women and children.
But it... You're quite helpful this morning. Kim, you better strike that.
After much support from the Hufs and other people that helped to get the FIM going, and I forget his name, him and his wife, they're all, Mr. Galbraith, John Galbraith and other folks. And after that, such, after that exhibit was such a success, it was hard to miss after that. I mean, I think FIM was on a great roll, and it was very good that it came to the college, but I really do think it helped downtown St. Petersburg grow up. And I think Terry said it best at the luncheon, that we were in the room there, and there was a big chahouli hanging in the middle, and he said, if it were not for FIM, there probably would not be a chahouli hanging in here today. And I think that's impressive, that the college could be a part of the growth in the arts community as well. It says, shows the impact that we've had on the community, not just in downtown St. Petersburg, but the whole entire arts community countywide.
Another person who deserves tremendous credit, and that is Ira Mittlin.
Yeah, Ira Mittlin was there.
Really helped to make it happen in the beginning.
And then our foundation paid for the luncheon. Can't forget that.
And of course, Mr. Johnson was president of the museum.
That's right.
How many years, Dick?
I don't know the exact number of years. But one additional comment, you talk about the development of downtown. Somewhere in my old files, there's a letter from Mel Sembler that he would not have gone forward with Baywalk without the tremendous success of FIM during the period of the Titanic. Because he had financial people come to town and look at it, and during the Titanic period, there were lines around the block, four and five and six deep, and that really impressed the financial people of what could be in St. Petersburg, Florida.
Dick, I'm trying to resist, but please never say Baywalk and Titanic in the same sentence.
They both sank.
I just can't help myself, I'm sorry.
I knew that was coming.
I was thinking the same thing.
Try not to smirk, Joe. Mr. President, do you have a report for us today?
I did, but I won't. Let me take just a quick moment through the very good efforts of Ed Woodruff, who represents us in Tallahassee, works the legislative process for us, and is very, very well-regarded. The newest governance coordination body, which is the Higher Education Coordinating Council, was a creature of the last legislative session, ostensibly to talk about how to expand and, in fact, I guess, divvy up the growth of baccalaureate education in Florida. So it's, the Board of Governance is very interested in doing it. Long and short is, through some very good work on Ed's part, we were able to host the co-chair, Mr. John Moyle of Miami, who has a great deal of background, served on the Board of Regents for a long time before it was dissolved, and now is back. He's sort of at the end of his professional career. Came and spent a day with us, and we were able to show him all of the really good things we have, not just in our own baccalaureate programs, but our growth in university partner centers, our work over on the Seminole campus. And he was unmindful of all of the good things, and now is, he talks about the St. Pete's story. And we have, I think, through the good work of the staff here, created a picture in their mind that it doesn't just have to be the universities divvying out things. So, I got a very nice note from the chancellor last week thanking us for our work with Mr. Moyle. Marshall Kreiser III, who is known to some of you, Dick, certainly we knew his dad, and he has indicated that he will make a visit as well to see what it looks like in mature programs that are functioning at the level that ours are. So, we will keep you informed of that, but it was a very nice feather in our cap to have him with us. Mr. Chairman, the only other, I didn't, don't know where it would show up, but this Friday night is our ceremony for, I'm sure Confolite was going to bring it up, for the 40th anniversary of the Tarpon Springs campus, and I'm really looking forward to that, so. Now would be a good time. Is this your report, Confolite?
No, I can tell it's not going to be there. This is a supplement.
It goes 10, 20, 30, 40. This Friday night, we'll be celebrating our 40th anniversary ceremony at the Tarpon Springs campus. It began at 6 o'clock at the amphitheater, and the purpose of that ceremony is to recognize and honor those women and men who contributed to fulfilling the dream of bringing a learning center and a campus at Tarpon Springs. And just to share with you some of the folks that's going to be there, of course, Nick and Mary Ellen Bellerus is going to be there, Fred Sekow is going to be there, John Chaplin is going to be there, of course, you know him, Dr. Law, Ava Heffner, all these are people who were in orgro, faculty, and staff for Nick Bellerus, Dave and Mary Wathell, who was on the district office and served up here for a year as well, John Teeter is going to be there, Dr. Norm Stevens, who used to work here, is now president at South Florida Community College, is also going to be there, Sally Krieger, Kaiser, I should say, the mayor's going to be there, the city manager's going to be there, and a lot of other dignitaries. So, after that, we're going to go into the museum. We're going to have Greek food, Greek music, and lots of dancing. So, I know the three of you have already RSVP'd. I talked to Terry this morning, I talked to Mr. Johnston, they may not be able to be there, but all of you are welcome, and we look forward to a great time on Friday night.
Wonderful. Thank you. Devron?
Is Evelyn and Mike Willerack is going to be there?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay. Well, as long as they're here, that's the most important.
And we also invited Gus, of course, but we got a word from Gus off yesterday. He's not going to be there, but he'll sort of represent it as well. So we're looking for a great crowd, and I look forward to it.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Y'all invited.
Can you update the board on the chancellor search for the system? I can share, it is a work in progress for sure. They had hired Jeff Hockaday, known to this board, to coordinate the search for the chancellor's position. They have announced a small slate of candidates to be interviewed next Monday, the 22nd. My sources tell me, you know, it's one of those, it's open until filled, so that there is still some negotiations going on for additional candidates who may or may not be there. I don't think anyone knows the answer to the question of who's next. There is clearly no favorite candidate at this point.
Is Dr. Holcomb still the chancellor?
He is still the chancellor.
And when will he stay chancellor till? The successor is chosen?
Till successor is chosen. I think there is every chance that he will stay engaged with the system through the search process, okay? So that his talent is still available to us. That's the word that we had gotten from the commissioner.
Just an editorial comment on my part to the board. I just find it very unusual, the timing of this search, when we're going through a transition from one governor to the next, and the uncertainty of knowing if the person who he's going to be reporting to, the education commissioner, is even going to be the education commissioner. It seems, and it's, a lot of folks, I'm sure, have not applied, knowing the uncertainty of who your boss is going to be. So it's just a very unusual timing on this whole search process. So, I wouldn't, you know, I'm not sure if there'll be any momentum. I know we're going to be meeting up, and you're going to be meeting up in Jacksonville tomorrow with the presidents, and the trustees will be meeting the next day. If there's even a momentum to pass resolutions, ask them to postpone the whole process until the state settles into more, you know, we have some direction as to where the state's going on these issues.
The president's already played that card. The trustees may have a different impact on him, but we had a straightforward, in-the-room meeting. Mr. Commissioner, can this be postponed? And his answer was, no, I'd like to get this done before the first...
Well, maybe the trustees need to put that on our agenda for Thursday. So, would you have any, would this board have any objection to me proposing that to the trustees?
No, I would highly recommend you do that, because I think, as you well put it, when you're in a state of flux, you may or may not get the best candidates to apply.
Any objection to me?
Well, if Dr. Holcomb is willing to stay longer, I don't know what his plans are. I hate to box him in if he has plans.
I don't believe he does, from what I understand. He's not, he hasn't given a date that he wants to be out of here.
So then, maybe he would acquiesce to it, and that would help to solve the problem, just put it back as retirement. Same thing we're trying to do with Sid, you know?
So, Devron, we may want to talk on that Thursday morning. Okay? Thank you. And thank you for your report, Dr. Law. The minutes to the meeting of October 8th, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I have one minor correction.
Yes, Terry?
On page 43180, 10-260, it references, it should be Chairman Burke, and it says Chairman Brett, just a minor thing, but I think I passed the gavel, so.
Do we have to vote on the correction?
No, that's just accepted. Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Harry Hawkeye there, Mr. Brett.
He just wanted to make sure he was out of office.
Did we accept the minutes with?
Motion's been made by Devron. Is there a second? Mr. Johnston, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Lang, I want to say thank you for your attendance at our board meetings. We certainly welcome you and appreciate you being here. Do you have any report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I enjoy being here. We're actively engaged in working on the contract with the church in Clearwater adjacent to the Clearwater campus. And shortly, I understand, we'll be doing some work on the JWB board.
Excellent. Mr. McKenzie, we certainly appreciate the report you sent us on the Friday packet on the litigation update. Do you have any report for us today?
Nothing.
Okay. Does any board member have a question of either of the attorneys?
Excuse me.
We'll move on then. The Provost Report, J.C. Brock, and the Allstate Center.
Good morning. I wanted to give you a snapshot of the past 18 years of funding that we have received at the Allstate Center through earmarks, grants, and competitive contracts. As you know, in the past six months, we've had some significant challenges, and has resulted in the elimination of 15 positions and tightening of our belts substantially as a result of the not seeking earmarks for the fiscal, federal fiscal year of 2011. And this gives you just a nice overview of the past 18 years. The critical point takes us to 211, the last column on your right, where our earmarks, our funding, no earmarks, will be 2.9 million. And you can see, we've gone from a level of nearly 20 million at some times back in 2004, if you will, to heading into 211. The news is not quite as bad as it may appear from this. We are not going to close the doors. We have some significant plans in place, have been very aggressive with meeting with our lawmakers. Dr. Law's been intimately involved, and as well as having significant conversation with Congressman Young's office, and as recently as last week with Harry Glenn. The good news is that back in early 2009, we quickly realized that hope was not a strategy, and we really designed the way that we did business at Allstate Center. You know, that we felt that it was important to go to project management, get rid of some of our administrative burdens, and we made a significant reduction of staff in the way we did business by going to a project management model, and reduced our operating admin function by about 25, 30 percent. Had significant leadership from Eileen LaHaye, Trinette Brown, from her business side of the house, has been an enormous asset. And in the bottom, you can see that we current total balance of 930. Remember, the federal fiscal year begins October 1. Current total balance of 930 is about 6.6 million that we're managing. We have new grants and contracts of 10-1 at 4.5 million, and pending funding of 2.8 million. You know, we're in the same position really as Urban Meyer at Florida. There's going to be a significant change. There's some problems that have to be addressed, and we're up to the task, and we're going to be doing that. We have total funding available that'll take us through 930 of 12, of about $13.9 million. So, we're healthy. If you hear that we're crashing and burning, that's not the case. We're going to remain very aggressive in seeking some additional opportunities. We know earmarks are not going to be in our future. Y'all read the news and hear what is going on at the national level. We are very happy to say, though, at the We are very happy to say, though, at the end of 210 last year, of our total funding, which was ballpark 12 million, about 30 percent of that was self-initiated and competitive. We had a goal in early 2009 to seek 50 percent of self-initiated competitive contracts and grant funding, as opposed to the earmarks. Fell a little bit short and got to 30 percent, but that's pretty healthy, and I think that's important for us to continue to do that. We have a full-time grant writer. And I have a document that I'd like to share with you. This is my operating document that we utilize each quarter, just to see where we're at with all of our activity.
Thank you.
That's okay. What's your...
He's bringing it up.
And this is more information than you may need or want to have, but what it does is give you a snapshot of every project that we currently are managing, when it was initiated, the length of the contract, and the balance of a 930. And if you look on the last page, we have it coded by colors, you can see the bottom in red are those that we did not receive. The good news is that if you look at the light green and the bottom from the pink and the three different colors there, we made an application of about 11 different grants in the last year. And although we did not receive those in red, I think we did receive about 30 to 40 percent of the ones that we applied for. And that's a pretty positive result, you know, in the grant world. So, we'll continue to be aggressive. That's a lot of information for you. If you want any further detail, I'll be happy to sit with any of you and go through that. But that is the only way that I can keep an accurate assessment of where we are and what we're doing, because much of this is multi-year money. Those of you that are familiar with grants, you know it might not be in contract till a year or two after the defined period, and it may extend two or three years of no cost extension. There's a lot of complexity to it. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
J.C., there was an effort to, with Congressman Young's office help, to try to take these from being earmarks and being parts of the budget, so that we wouldn't have to apply each year. Is there any movement on that effort?
I met with Harry last Thursday for about an hour, and we have an initiative with the other four counter drug schools to seek a single line item of $30 million for all five counter drug school. Harry seems to think that that is a very good strategy. He was going to go back and talk with the other members from the districts where those other schools are, as long with the National Guard Bureau, to determine how feasible this was. He doesn't know. Harry was quite blunt. We don't know what's going to happen.
Would that be part of Homeland Security and Department of Defense?
No, it'd be defense only. It'd be direct line item to National Guard Bureau. We have met with Representative Villaracas from Homeland Security, and been very well-received. All of them are willing. Nelson, Villaracas, Lemieux, Castor, all were very willing, very receptive, very impressed by what we're doing and how we're doing it, and again, be willing to help us in the future before fiscal year 211, which began in October. You know, we have what we have, 2.9 million.
Devron, do you know when, there's been talk about, maybe Congressman Young, maybe Subcommittee on Appropriations, Defense...
It looks like it's going to be...
Do we know?
Not for sure yet.
When's that going to be announced, do you know?
Another week or so, I think it's another week or so.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have hosted all of those individuals for sit-down conferences. We've hosted Senator Lemieux, we've hosted Congressman Castor, we've hosted Congressman Villaracas. We hosted the new general who heads the National Guard here in town. Representative Chandler Long has done some really good work to get our game plan together, establishing those relationships that would allow us to work as part of, not an earmark, but part of a general appropriation, is something that we're heading into.
And obviously, this board does policy, but I would encourage you also to think about engaging someone in Washington. We used to have Linda Davis, I'm not sure who a person, but, you know, keeping that everyday presence there of helping to make this happen was well worth it before, and I just, I know it's hard to find a person like that, you know, who, but it really helps make things happen.
Yes.
J.C., thank you for your report. Does any board member have a question? Okay.
Confolite?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This morning, I want to report to you on the Leaper Radnor Museum of Art accreditation This board will have a role in that process further downstream, particularly in the site visit, so I think it's very appropriate to continue to dialogue here, as we have in the past. If you recall, Mr. Chairman, at the June board meeting, when we reported on arts and education, I presented to this board seven strategies going forward for the Leaper Radnor Museum. One of those strategies was to achieve and leverage accreditation by the American Association Museum, which I will refer to as AAM. What you see there is the five basic steps in the process. The first step is to submit the application. We have achieved that step. The application was submitted, the application was prepared by a board oversight group that was put together underneath the Leaper Radnor Museum of Art Board, and that was chaired by Janice Buchanan, along with myself, and Lynn Whitelaw, and Lynn Pearson, who was on that committee as well. There were two questions on that submission that really caused that committee to step back and to think and to seek additional guidance. One question was the governing authority for the museum. Initially, we thought that that would be the Leaper Radnor Museum Board, but then after seeking guidance from the American Association of Museums, they said that we should have both the Leaper Radnor Board as well as this board here, and that's why you would have a role in this process as well. The other question that was, that caused us to step back had to do with the question of whether or not the museum had accessioned at least 80 percent of its art collection, and that's the permanent collection, as shown in the chart there below. Back to the process, though, we received official acceptance into the accreditation process on January, on September 1st, and then on October 13th, we received the official notice to start the self-study, which is step two. The self-study is the most important part of the accreditation process. It will cover all aspects of the museum's operations, including the permanent collection. The biggest part will be a section called collection stewardship. Are we taking care of the collection the way we should be? We have one year to complete that self-study, so it will be due for submission back to the AAM on October 13th, 2011. Once that's submitted back to the AAM, they will take two to three months to review that self-study in great detail. If there are any outstanding questions at that point, they will submit to us a checklist, and once all of those questions have been answered and additional documentation has been resolved, they will then make a decision as to whether the museum is ready to go to the next step, which is step four, that's the site visit. If it is decided that it is in fact ready to go to the next step, they will grant us interim approval on about June of 2012. The site visit will include two people. They will submit us a list of 20 to 30 names. We can eliminate any names that we feel inappropriate. They will then choose two people to come down to visit us. They will stay for two or three days. They will probably want to interview at least the chair of this board, maybe other members of this board as well. The final decision, after that, the site visit will, the visitors will put together a report and a recommendation on accreditation that will go back to the commission of the AAM, and then they will decide about a year later in 2012 on our final accreditation. So, it's about a three to four-year process. We have plenty of time, but we wanted to get on record as sharing this information with you. The other question that caused the committee to step back was the question of, has the museum accessioned 80 percent of its collection, permanent collection? The permanent collection is defined as the collection of art that is central to the mission of the museum, which of course, that's Leaper Radnor and Abraham, Leaper, Abraham Radnor and Esther Gentle. So, you can see, we have approximately 2,008 pieces of artwork in our permanent collection, including the Leaper Radnor, Abraham, and Esther Gentle, as well as art that's been donated directly to the museum, that's recorded on the 501(c) of the museum. This board also passed last meeting, a transfer of the management responsibility for the Gulf Coast art collection, that we're going to include that into our permanent collection as well, and to accession that art as well. There are two other categories there. The fourth category is important, because that's, those are artworks that are owned by the foundation and that will not transfer to the museum for management. That artwork is currently located in the vault of the museum, and in order to make room for the Gulf Coast artwork, we need to find a storage place for the other artwork that's found by the, that's owned by the foundation.
What is that artwork?
That is, largely is called the Canadian Prints Collection, and part of that collection was accessioned into the museum, collection only a small part, but the rest of it is to our advantage to actually leave it with the foundation and let the foundation use it at this, as it deems necessary throughout the college and for other reasons. And so, we need to find a temporary space for that. So, in summary, Mr. Chair, we're well on our way to accreditation. It's a very important strategic initiative for us. We have a work cut out for us with the self-study, and we will keep this board informed as we proceed down this process. I will be happy to answer any questions for you.
I'm sorry, I just want more clarification on this art that's owned by the foundation. What's it called, the Canadian?
The largest part of that is called the Canadian Prints Collection, but there are other artists in that as well, and that art is stored at the museum right now, and we do not see accessioning that into our permanent collection, not to our advantage, it's not central to our mission.
Was that gift just given to us, or were there any stipulations on that gift?
Actually, that gift was given to, it came through the Eckerd Foundation, the Canadian Prints, and it is owned by the foundation, and it just happened to be stored at the museum at this point.
It's owned by our foundation?
Yes, yes, it is.
Just don't remember that gift.
Yeah, in fact, at the last board meeting, Mr. Chair, there was two transactions in that board memo, if you remember. One was to transfer the Gulf Coast artworks to the museum to be accessioned. The other was to transfer only the accession part of the Canadian collections, which is only 167 objects, and the remainder of that was to stay with the foundation for use by the foundation as it sees fit. That's what the memo said last week, and that's the fourth category of collections that we hold.
I just don't recall, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just have to say, a lot of the, we have many duplicates of prints by Abraham Radnor and Alan Leaper also, and so, the museum keeps only a certain number of those. The rest of them are now coming to the St. Petersburg College Foundation, and we're hoping, or have been there, and we're hoping there will be a St. Petersburg College art collection that will be able to be circulated among the whole college, where faculty could have these prints in their offices. They can be not under the auspices of the museum, where it has to be sacrosanct and kept carefully.
Terry.
So, we have a wealth of wonderful opportunities.
Thank you, Janice.
Dr. Carney, I just have a question about the Gulf Coast collection. A year and a half or so ago, I was asked by a friend associated with Bayfront All Children's to put a partial loan of some of that collection at the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still there?
I'm not sure. Is it?
It is.
It is there.
And do we have any other type of a program where we can share a little more of the art with the community like that? Or is there any other requests or proposals like that out there?
In fact, that category of art that Dr. Buchanan was just talking about, that would be the area of art that we could loan out like that, but the permanent collection is really the center of our exhibitions and our art education, and I'm not aware of any requests for art out of the permanent collection. There were large pieces of the Gulf Coast, of the sculptures, that we will not accession into the permanent collection for the museum, and those pieces could be available for those types of events. Thanks. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I just want to comment on that board. It is so hardworking and dedicated and very interested for not getting paid. I'm telling you, they spend a lot of time, and we're lucky to have those women that are so dedicated.
Thank you. I agree fully.
Any other question? If it's fine with the board, I would like to go out of order on a topic. I know we have more reports from the provost, but we have students here, and they've come for a special item on the report, and that's concerning building at the Clearwater campus. So, if there's no objection, I would like to go to item E4 right now. Is that fine with everyone?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to go to E4, and Susan, are you going to introduce this presentation, please?
What we would like to do this morning is to quickly, quickly go through the new building, the Ethics and Social Science Building that is in your packet here, E4. And then, we would like to bring up the students and Phil Treza, who is the project architect with Harvard Jolly for this project, and have Phil and the students talk a little bit about their experience as we have gone through the initial design of this building. Jason Green is here this morning. Jason is the architectural professor also. The students are in architectural design, building construction, and sustainability management, and we'll have them come up and introduce themselves, and we have a couple of speakers today. What we were attempting to do here, since this project is housed on the Clearwater campus, and our architecture program and our building construction program are on that campus also, was to provide the students with a hands-on experience, so to speak, and a look at what it looks like in the real world, to go through the process of design, development of documents, and actually, the construction process, how something goes from paper to bricks and mortar. So, although the students will be here this morning talking about their experiences and their design, we, this is an ongoing process, and they will continue, they and other students will continue to be involved in this project as we move forward over the next year or so. So, with that, let us go through the project here, and then we'll introduce the students and go ahead and deal with that portion also. One of the items I would like to bring to your attention on the board memo, if you look at the listing of spaces, it says that we have one 36 student station, educational lab, classroom, and actually, we have four of those in the new building that you will see. This building will contain a total of 952 student stations. So, we're going to kind of walk you through this.
So, at the Clearwater campus, we have highlighted yellow teaching auditorium, and this building is going to encompass the teaching auditorium with a new three-story, 53,000-square-foot building. So, we're going to start by going in, we're going to demolish the entry where the bathrooms, the lobby space, all of that is out of code, doesn't function very well right now, so we're going to incorporate that into the new construction, as well as some of the storage and mechanical spaces on the back end of the building. So, what we're doing is preserving the teaching auditorium that we have today. So, really, just that trapezoidal shape in the center, we're going to remain, and we're going to build this new building around. We've got 25 new classrooms, ranging from 60 student station classrooms all the way to a 24 student station classroom. We've got faculty offices, we've got adjunct space. We have a lot of great student gathering spaces, including an area for food service as well. And I think it's going to be really great for the students. It's really going to be able to focus that on the campus, and this is going to be just an exciting and dynamic space for them. This is the ground floor plan. You can see that trapezoidal shape in the center being the existing teaching auditorium. In the front of it, that's all new pre-function space and an open lobby space right now. On the backside, a little difficult to see, but the, I guess that's not going to, sorry. The serpentine wall, that's all a student lounge and food service space, and all of that, the orientation of that overlooks the quad. So, right now, in that area, there's a lot of dynamic space because of the hard drive cafe where the students hang out right now. There's already a natural grouping there, and this sort of builds upon that with how the campus is already functioning. The second floor, very similar, again, offices, or excuse me, classrooms surrounding that teaching auditorium space, and some more student gathering spaces central to that area overlooking the quad.
Just so I'm clear, there's nothing, though, that's going to be built on top of the teachers?
There is right now. This is the third floor. Because of the height of the teaching auditorium, it takes up a two-story volume. But when you look at the third floor, the faculty offices in that center room and corridor right there are over the teaching auditorium. So, you're not going to see any of that existing building at all, except we're looking at, you know, preserving some of the finishes, maybe using a little bit of that limestone inside the building to sort of carry that forward. This is the third floor. The faculty offices on the bottom side of that, they have a window wall as well, so a lot of nice space for them, some adjunct space, the rest of the classrooms around it.
Will this be our only three-story building on the campus?
This will be the only three-story building on the campus, yes. So, it really starts a new stature, a new, you know...
So far.
Yeah, as of today. So here's an exterior rendering of the building. This is from the parking lot side from the south. By encompassing the teaching auditorium, we were able to preserve as many of the trees as we could. You'll see them superimposed a little bit right there, shaded through, so you still see the size of the building. But we're only going to lose or have to relocate up to three trees, three oak trees to do this project. We're very excited about that.
It's a beautiful building.
This is a view from the quad, that dark space at the bottom, that serpentine area, that's where that student lounge, food service space will be overlooking the quad.
Is this already part of our PICO funding?
It's a combination of PICO funding and the bond.
And it's listed, the funding sources are listed on the board memo here.
Will this be the format basically for the rest of the campus? Because this is changing from the old limestone process.
Well, we still, in the past couple of buildings that have been constructed on campus, we use a majority of stucco because it's a lot easier to maintain and use the limestone as architectural highlights. So the Natural Science and Math Building is predominantly stucco, but there are those exposed, the limestone that we're reusing in there. So this will keep that same palette, but it will be a majority of limestone. We're looking at, or I'm sorry, a majority of stucco. Thank you, Susan. And what's shown right now are the stair towers. There's one right there on the left, it's sort of a lighter color. That is the limestone. We've got a stair tower at the front of the building and the back of the building. We're still ironing out all of that because this is just schematic design.
So it's going to, it's going to all blend in when you're done?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's going to fit with the campus. It's just a new stature of building for the campus.
And one of the things that we decided to do as we were looking at the campus and developing this building and looking at a way to keep as many trees as possible, was it made sense to take the food service, which is in the crossroads building and small, and to move it around and put it in this building on the bottom floor, expand the amount of space so that students can use it as a gathering point. And also, it will now face the quad, which really is where we want it to be. The other, the other good thing that happened, and when the students come up and talk a little bit, is one of, what we have asked them to do and what they have taken on the challenge is to provide some design that will work on the outside, in the quad area, that will be an enhancement to that space and that can be part of this project. So when they present that, the fact that we've got the food service at the quad facing out, student gathering areas, them coming in with a design component is all part of the package and the piece on this, on this project.
Susan, when you, if you go back, it's on, it's off the screen now, that area right there appears to have above the first floor, a lot of decking or roof. Is that a decking that can be used by students for outdoor sitting and what have you?
You know, Mr. Johnston, these are really preliminary plans right now. That certainly is a possibility that we can look at. We put that element in there because we just felt that the building needed some kind of an overhang over that serpentine glass wall facing out. It will provide a shading element, it will help if it's raining, but we certainly can look at that opportunity.
I don't know, that may just be another gathering spot that the, might enhance the building. I don't know how much cost you would be adding. You'd have to add something to make sure it was waterproof and secure and what have you, and certainly a railing around there. But it might just be another spot where students could gather on a nice day.
Sure. Good, good point. Let us take a look at it as we proceed with the design. Okay, any questions on this and, okay?
I do want to thank you on the memo and Mr. Brad pointed out to me, you know, I looked at this project budget amount and I assumed the chart, which I shouldn't have done, was the construction cost, but I really appreciate, and I know we don't usually do this, where we have the breakdown of where all the money's coming from on the, on the project to make this project happen. That's very, very helpful.
You're welcome. We've been putting that in recently. This project happens to have the bond money in it, student capital improvement fee money in it. It has a lot of sources of funds. It has the extra 2.7 million that we were committed from the Senate side of the House last year that we were committed, so.
This is very good. I like how you put whether we got the money actually appropriated, where, everything. That's excellent. Very, very nicely done.
We'll continue to do that. What we'd like to do now is to introduce the architects and the students, if they would come up. And Jason. Would we like to have the rest of the students come up? Would you like to come up and join them?
He'd like to.
If you'd like to, you're more than welcome to come up. Please, don't be shy.
Come on up.
Jason Green, the professor, this is his class this morning, and he's been instrumental in working with his class. So these are folks.
Step over this way, there's plenty of room on this side here. Everybody can sit here. Fill in. There you go. Well, you're a speaking part, right? You need to stay there. There you go. I don't know if you can see them, I can see you.
This is interesting.
Thanks for being here.
What I'd like to do is to introduce Phil Trezza from Harvard Jolly. He's the senior associate with Harvard Jolly and he has been working with the students here in both the design charrette that they're going to talk a little bit about and show you today, but also in explaining to the students kind of the process of how the design of the building goes on. And Phil and Harvard Jolly are going to continue to be engaged with the students all the way through this process. Again, architecture students, building, construction students, and sustainability management students, so that they can get a hands-on look at what this, what happens when it goes from paper essentially to bricks and mortar. Phil is a graduate of St. Petersburg College and UF and then has come back here and has taught some classes for us in the architecture program. So we're happy to have him working here with us. A couple other folks from Harvard Jolly that are here and have been instrumental in working with us is Ward Frizelowski, who's Executive Vice President with Harvard Jolly.
Welcome, Ward.
And also Chad Jones is here. He's an interim architect with Harvard Jolly, so he's been helpful in working with us also and our students. And again, we will continue to see these people and this process all the way through. So let me, let me just introduce the two students that are going to speak this morning, and we would welcome any other students if they have something that they would like to add this morning. But first is Bob McCaughy. Bob is a student in building construction. He's, he's pursuing an AS in architectural design and construction technology. He's a recipient of the 2010 Mortrench Scholarship, a geotechnical contractor scholarship. He's doing some OPS work for us. He's former president of the Green Club. He is USGBC accredited lead green associate also. And the other person is Linnea Floden. Okay, got that right. Linnea is an architectural design student at SPC Clearwater Campus and is also a senior majoring in sustainability management. She's going to be transferring to USF in the fall 2011 to pursue her master's in architecture at the School of Architecture and Community Design. She serves as the president of SPC's USGBC Council Student Group, president of SPC's Gargoyle Architectural Honor Society, vice president of SPC's American Institute of Architects of Students, is a member of Sigma Beta Delta Honor Society for Business Schools and Clearwater Campus as a student government associate and Green Club. So Phil, with that, if you would.
Thank you, Susan. I also want to, I want to start by thanking you, Susan, as well as Michael Carter, for really encouraging the student involvement in this design process. It's been really a great thing. I think it's a great practical experience for the students, you know, early on in their education, we deal with a lot of conceptual ideas, but it's good to also kind of see the other side of the spectrum, kind of the practical and business side of the architecture. And, you know, as Susan said, I'm a product of St. Pete College, proud product of St. Pete College. I went through this program almost 20 years ago now, and so it's really special to me to be involved in this project now, such a significant project for your Clearwater Campus. Let's go to the next slide. Do we have those? Yeah. As Susan mentioned, we've, we've hosted a bunch of presentations and design charrettes with the students, starting back in late October. I gave a presentation actually in the TA building, showing the students the actual design process we've gone through, and then invited them to participate in a voluntary design charrette to help with that design process for the building itself, as well as a significant feature that's going to happen in the quadrangle of the campus, the center courtyard, involving basically a gathering area, possibly a water feature and some shade structures. And so we've gone through several iterations with them and that's where Linnea and Bob are going to speak about their presentations that they've presented to us a few weeks ago. And as Susan mentioned, we're also going to continue to develop that, their ideas. We're going to take the best of their ideas, develop those a little further, and then continue to keep them involved in that design process until it comes to fruition. So with that.
Okay. All right. Well, Michael and Susan asked that we share a little bit about, you know, how much of an educational opportunity this entire process has been for us to be able to be exposed to this level of the architect contractor and client relationship. As far as the quad design goes, as a design student, this has been an incredible opportunity for us. Usually, at least at this point in our design careers, we've been given kind of inner projects, you know, generic spaces, and been, you know, told to try and find and form an opinion about that. In the case of the quad, I think several of us that have worked on the project actually, you know, developed a sense of conviction about this space, about how it should be occupied and a sense of ownership, if you will. So it was very much been a kind of a binding experience to us, to our college, and we very much feel more involved and have an opinion about the space and we look forward to the end result. So as far as the design aspect, that has been a wonderful opportunity for us. As far as being a student and witnessing this entire process, I can't imagine how much this is going to be a valuable experience to me as I get, as I get further in my experience. We, I had no idea about what architects have to do to get their jobs. And so I look forward to the challenge, but it's been amazing seeing the portfolios that they submit and how good you have to look on paper, not just as a sole architect, but as a, as a firm and really what a client is looking for. And then from the sustainability management side, to see how an organization like St. Petersburg College has made it, you know, it's a fundamental way of life for this organization to look at the triple bottom line and, and consider the planet in addition to your people and profit. And seeing how that's informing this design process is very exciting for me as a student. So I'm very grateful for this opportunity and for you guys to have allowed us to be a part of it. So Bob.
Oh, okay. The most eye-opening experience for me as a construction major is, again, what the architectural firms have to go through to earn the business. In being on the construction side, I'm really, I'm waiting to break ground. Let's break ground, let's, you know, get the design stuff taken care of, but let's just break ground and start building it. And for me, it's been eye-opening only because, you know, I never see this whole aspect of the design, the planning. I've sat through the selection committee process for both the architectural firm and the construction management firm, firms. And something that was very encouraging were how many of these firms had St. Pete College graduates. And for both construction management as well as the architectural firms. I'd sat in, I think, nine presentations for each and every firm had at least one SPC's, one St. Pete College student. So it's very encouraging, especially, you know, during these days and times, how struggling it is, how much of a struggle it is out there to find the proper employment, to know that this is the right path, this is a great program, that two grade, three grade programs that we have in the college. And just to have the opportunity to bring in students to get that real-life experience outside of the classroom is fantastic. And so that's what I've really been able to take away from it. And thank you.
Wonderful.
All right. I'll just close by saying that, again, we're going to keep the students involved. It's been a great experience so far and they've got a lot of good sustainability ideas that we're going to try to infuse into the project as much as possible. So, again, thank you for the opportunity and.
Good job.
Do we have anybody else that would like to make a comment or add anything? It is a great-looking group. It's a great-looking group. Okay, well, I thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to have the students be involved in this process. I think it's, again, it's on their campus and I think we'll, we look forward to keeping them engaged as much as they want to be involved with this process and we have the commitment of both the architectural firm and the construction firm to do that. So, again, we appreciate that opportunity of working with them. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Questions for Susan? I just want to compliment Linnea and Matthew for your excellent presentations. They certainly were appreciated. And I want to thank all involved for meshing the academic program with what we're doing, our business strategy here at the college. We just need to continue to look every opportunity to involve students in our business decisions. I think it just makes sense and it's a great opportunity for all and we can learn from the students too and your good ideas. And best of luck to all the students on your academic pursuit in the area of architecture or building design or construction management. And hopefully, if the economy will get going again, and we'll have a need for even more of you in the future, because that's, Florida's still based on a growth real estate and economy. So the best of luck to all of you and thank you for being at our board meeting here today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want approval?
Yes, sir.
I would like to go ahead and submit approval on requested items for the approval of schematic design program and approval for preliminary GMP of $10,565,000.
Motion's been made to approve item E4. It's been properly seconded and a further discussion. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We'll now have a five-minute recess. Thank you for your attention. Dr. Oliver, we appreciate hearing from you on the Seminole campus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President. I've taken off my Seminole campus hat today and I'm putting on my eCampus hat. And I'm trading in my one number to describe the slide in favor of three letters. And those three letters are LMS. That's our learning management system. And to talk about the, probably the single most important decision we'll make impacting every student and faculty member at the college in the months ahead. Maybe the best way to think of the LMS is that it's an academic people soft. It's a software shell or template into which we pour all of our academic content, including face-to-face classes, blended classes, and online classes. It's a $200,000 annual decision, but more importantly, it touches everything that we do at the, at the college. And we're going to hear now from, from, let's see if I can go back. We're going to hear now from, I think, we're going to hear, we're going to hear now from one of our students talking about her use of Angel.
Angel is a very important part of the learning process here at SPC. It's used in basically everything. Classes, the different types of classes, online, blended, or in person, they all use it as a communication tool. Teachers can communicate to students anything from assignments, class materials, grades, and basically anything else, as well as students can communicate to professors. It's also used for student activities on campus. Clubs use it to communicate basic information to their members, like events or elections or anything. And recently, I proposed to cabinet that they, that we could use Angel as a communication tool for student activities college-wide, because every single student has an Angel account, even if some classes might use it and some might not. So Angel could be a very useful tool for student activities. So I believe Angel is a very important part of SPC.
We, in the, in the early days, in the eCampus. We, in the early days, in the eCampus GarageBand days, as we like to call it, from before 1998, in the late 90s, we had individual classes, and even some programs like VetTech, using individual webpages to foster the curriculum. But then from 1998 to 2004, we had a system called WebCT, and we went through a process in 2004 and selected Angel. That's our current learning management system, the Angel Learning Management System. And we're focusing on the topic of LMS today, because since June of this year, and over the next six months, the administration, and finally, the board, will need to decide what to do about our LMS when our current contract with Angel expires. Angel was recently purchased by Blackboard, which makes this a much more open process than it might have been otherwise. Last time, we were faced with a contract renewal, we simply renewed our Angel contract, but the game has changed. Under the very capable leadership of the eCampus and WITZ Executive Director, Vicky Westergaard, a detailed process, action plan, and timeline has been crafted and put in place for us to make this decision. There's a 30-member evaluation committee comprised primarily of faculty from all areas of the college, all levels, all academic areas and sites. There's a timeline, a detailed evaluation rubric that we can share with the board if you're interested, that looks at things like feature set, total cost of ownership, and how we can transition our current courses to addition, to new courses if the system changes. The group has been working since June of 2010. They've narrowed the choices of potential LMSs for us to use, and the board will be receiving a recommendation in no later than April 2011 on which LMS we're going to recommend that we, that we launch for the coming, the coming three years likely. Questions? Yes?
Dr. Oliver, one of the things that was talked about a lot in the meeting that Dr. Law and I just attended up in DC, was about, obviously, this whole student success thing, and the completion agenda. And it's been the traditional method of colleges to find out that a student is failing after a student has already failed, after the semester's over. And if they've taken four courses, and they don't sign up the next semester for courses because they failed two of their courses already and get frustrated by college, that's when we know that that student has failed, after everything's, after its history. And now they're saying there's a lot of softwares out there, software products out there, that are monitoring student success during the course of a semester, where indicators such as the student has two or three continuous absences would be an indicator, that after the first testing, that if the student's taking four courses, there's a, you know, computer programs which will show if the student, if it's reported, if the student's failing in one, in the first test, in one of the courses, that maybe that, we identify that student, there's some type of, then from the software, there's an action that takes place to, either a counseling, a call by the instructor, to kind of monitor that student, so that we're, instead of dealing with failure after it happens, we're in a more preventative mode before the semester goes too far of figuring out whether a student is succeeding or failing. Does any of this, this LMS software that y'all are looking at blend into this type of goal?
Well, it certainly could. I mean, we get that information from, from the LMS. We can monitor literally a keystroke. But I did bring Vicky Westergaard up here. She has been working more directly with that group, and looking at the products, at the shortlist that now we're looking at. And I'll ask her if she has any idea about not only this LMS, but potentially other software that might tag on to PeopleSoft, that might serve as indicators.
Because, yes, the last thing we want is to have a separate software where people are going to have to enter stuff in this, and enter stuff in that software.
Exactly. And a lot of the LMS companies have recognized that need, and they're building in a lot of analytics that didn't used to be there. So that certainly is a factor that we can look into. Not all of them offer that, but many of them do.
Can we make that as part of our request for proposal, or whatever, that it have that blended thing? Dr. Law, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm trying to find an article. In fact, there's a very emergent, there was an article in Inside Higher Education just last week, about those systems that build the intelligence in to give us early warning on students. It's a very current topic, and there are two or three products that appear to have a decent market share. I was pretty impressed. They've done a really good job outlining the needs, and we can certainly revisit to see how that has been included, or what features we can lend. They've done a really good job outlining the... We can make that a specific item in the evaluation rubric.
And he got it down in two words, "early warning." That's really what we're looking at here. Mr. Johnston?
Jim, in this whole eCampus, how much interaction is set up for the students? Because many times I can see how it could easily happen, you're an e-student, and you're on a computer, and you're, wherever you are, work or at home, and you have no interaction with other students. Because I can recall the college days, I would turn to Devron and say, "Devron, I need some help," and he'd say, "Okay," and he'd help me. And I don't know, I don't know whether, you know, we're missing something by, we have plenty of space here in the weekends, if we set up some kind of counseling, or to solve the problems that you're talking about with these, where students could gather with open sessions, just to go along with their eCampus learning.
We have, that's a very good point, a very good question. The systems that we're looking at all have highly interactive features, and Vicky and her team work very hard when they're developing courses, to make sure that there's a high degree of interactivity. Most courses have a written assignment, discussions, and other kinds of interactions in the class, so that students are in fact discussing with each other on a regular basis, literally every week of a class. Some have something called a student commons that's in it, and so that the students, if they, if they just want to say, "Hey, Devron," they can do that without being in a formal discussion group. So those sorts of tools are already in place. And we constantly remind students that we do have learning commons on all of our campuses, that they can come for additional support if they need it. Again, many of the students are taking online classes because either their work challenges or their life challenges don't permit them the time to come on campus to a face-to-face class or an extra one. But the system itself provides for a lot of opportunities for interaction. We design the courses so that there's considerable interaction, and we'll continue to foster that as part of what we do.
Well, in your, in your design here, if you could monitor the interaction, because you probably could figure that if the student is interacting either with faculty or other students, that they, they're still interested in what's going on and trying to help themselves. And I don't know when you schedule your, you schedule like maybe Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday, when the school seems to be as busy as, maybe students have some time on weekends. And I think we ought to explore the use of our facilities on weekends, to see what we could, how we could further accommodate students in their learning process.
That's a great idea, but for the student that can't come to campus in the first place, and some of them are actually at a distance, so they can't come here, we need something that will serve them as well. Not only, as Dr. Oliver said, we try to help people design the courses, so that there will be that interactivity, that collaboration, many of the courses, I've looked at dozens, if not hundreds, of courses over time, many of them have kind of a virtual water cooler, where students can go in and discuss amongst themselves whatever subject they want to, whether it's talking about, you know, "I need help," or "Do you understand this subject?" We also have access to a system called Smart Thinking, which we have put into, or have the ability at least, to put into all the online classes, that offers tutoring in about 15 different subjects, that is real-time, online, anytime they want to do it. So...
Well, I was just thinking a little bit beyond on time, just for the students that may have a problem with working the e-system, to open up Saturday morning, human discussions.
We do, we do some of that. I know at Seminole, we have tutoring in the library on Saturday mornings. So I think there's some of that, but most of these students are taking online courses because they are appreciating the fact that they can work on their schedules, and so it becomes, it becomes very difficult to do. Certainly, we need to look at every opportunity to bring students in, whether it be electronically or face-to-face, to get services. Early warning is the perfect word. I teach an online class, and I can see that a student that misses a couple of discussion forums is at risk. And I try to intervene with those, but there are ways to do things systematically, and so I think that's a really good, both of those are good suggestions. For as we develop these systems, we continue to make them more robust, and try to get students connected to the curriculum, and to extracurriculum, in a way that makes them stay on.
Any other questions?
Terry.
Dr. Oliver, just a little bit off the topic here. Any update on the Policy Institute? I know that we had approved that last month, and had a pretty aggressive timeline, and I'm just wondering how, how things are going.
It's going well. The, actually, the pool for that, the first review for that position, the executive director position, closed yesterday. We're reviewing those names and getting those names to Dr. Cooper by tomorrow, the 17th. And then, at that point, we expect to have a strong pool, and be able to interview candidates, and move forward on that timeline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a quick follow-up on that. How many applicants did we get?
I have not even looked. There's been, there's been a number.
I spoke with Dennis Jones yesterday, and he was very pleased with the pool, though. He said we got some quality applicants, and I think he's coming home today to be part of the process tomorrow to help select, so...
Then it's the point, Dennis is the point person on this.
Thank you.
Very good.
Jim and Vicky, thank you so much for the presentation. Devron and I attended a session in, at the ACCT, which talked about the weekend classes, and how successful they are at these. Bunker Hill Community College is starting classes at midnight, in some cases, and they have a unique situation, so I'm not suggesting we duplicate that, but I was surprised, but the colleges that are like us, which are offering weekend classes, and how successful the enrollment on Saturday and Sunday is there. It's, I thought, oh, well, that's a peculiar situation. No, these are, students are looking to take classes at unconventional times, and unconventional days, and they have a pretty good program. We went to one in New Jersey, which was not a urban type of, it was a suburban type of area like we have, and very successful. And actually, faculty, there was not the resistance that I thought was there, too. There's faculty members who want to teach these courses on the weekend. So it was, it was just a very interesting concept. Devron?
To piggyback on that, Evelyn and I went to a session on Lansing Community College, and Michigan had, called "Get a Skill, Get a Job, or Get Your Money Back." And it was very interesting. It's been successful at that college, though. They pick their, their growth areas in terms of job growth and other things, and they're training these folks on, for example, in the state of, in the state of Michigan, I think you said something like 60% of the people used to work in the online, on the assembly lines. Now these folks are coming in, they've never had to interview for jobs. So they're teaching them interview skills, as well as what they need to retool themselves on, on the new emerging industries in the state. And they're guaranteeing that they'll get a job, and they're attracting these folks. But it was attracting these folks, what, nine or 10 months out now? They didn't start tracking them until just recently, but they've had a high success rate, especially in the pharmaceutical tech program. So, that was an interesting one that we saw as well. So it's kind of, you know, we're going to have, I think, that the community college's role, while it will be traditional, it will evolve a little bit to make sure that folks can get to work.
I talked to some potential students who've said they're working Monday through Thursday, and they would like to upgrade their skills, and the times they have available are Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and they can do some online during the week, but if we had, and that's revolutionary, to have weekend classes. It is, I think, for this institution, but I'd like to see us explore that, and see where we could take it. We certainly have facilities that are, that are here, and probably vacant, and if we could put them to use, I think that would enhance our ability to serve students.
Dr. Law, you got some suggestions there?
We are, we have our sleeves rolled up. We are doing a soup-to-nuts review of our academic schedule, to make sure it meets student needs. Eventually, these things tend to meet our needs better than meeting students' needs. So we've put it all back on the table, and we're reviewing it. Perfect, timely input. We will, we'll be at it until late January, mid-February, so now is the time for, every dean is reviewing what we're doing. Thank you for the input. We'll tee that up as part of that process.
The good part with some of the things being suggested, too, is this, and I, I went to the college from New Jersey that made the presentation, they've already tried things and failed, and so we can learn from them. Like they said, Saturday, they've learned to cut off their classes by 4:00, because Saturday evening, they, although they were offering, people weren't taking them, you know, they just needed that break, you know? So they kind of did some things, and saw what worked and what didn't work, so that, you know, there's learning models out there, or best practices on these items, if we just contact those colleges. Mrs. Olmer, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning, and I'm excited again about the opportunity to share with you about happenings downtown and at Midtown. In our previous conversations, we've talked about enrollment growth, we've talked about demographics, and we've talked about the programs and services that we have available to address student needs. Well, the good news is, enrollment is continuing to grow at double digits, and we're continuing to provide even greater services for our students, including the recent addition of financial aid assistance for both sites, much thanks to Michael Bennett. Students will receive financial aid assistance for a few hours at downtown, or a few hours at Midtown, every week, as we're going through this peak registration period. In addition, I'm happy to report that this coming spring, students will have the opportunity for the most extensive, robust student course offerings that we've ever had at both of these sites, including Friday and Saturday classes. Having said that, today, I would like to focus on another important element of student success and student retention, and that is student activities. Studies consistently show us that students that are engaged are much more likely to persist in their goals. The slide that's part of this presentation today is a snapshot of the activities that students have been exposed to, and have engaged in, at the Midtown campus over the last couple of months. You will note, the title of this slide says, "St. Petersburg College Midtown: A Beacon in the Community." I will tell you that as I talk to students, and as I talk to members of the community, this sentiment is expressed over and over again. On October 21st, the SPC College bus rolled up to the Midtown campus, and then stopped at the Downtown campus, picking up students to take them to the Palladium to hear the Jazz Festival as part of our Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month. There were 20 students from Midtown on that bus, and 30 students from Downtown. For many of these students, they had never been to a jazz concert, they had never been to the Palladium. On Saturday, October 23rd, SPC Midtown hosted the annual Law Fest Workshop and Community Fair. Attorneys and judges across the Sixth Judicial Circuit came and volunteered their time to answer questions about trusts, wills, restoring rights, bankruptcy, civil, criminal, and tax law. This annual event draws over 100 people, and is a vital community resource. On October 27th, we celebrated Red Ribbon Week. A community resource guide was developed and distributed to students, giving them much information about resources available in the community. Dan Brady, human services instructor, talked about the history of Red Ribbon Week, and he discussed the enormous cost of alcohol and substance abuse on society. Three of our students shared riveting stories about their journeys through substance abuse. One female student spoke about her former addiction to crack cocaine. Another student spoke of drinking a quart of vodka a day, and the destructive path his life took culminating in homelessness and sleeping under the Ninth Street overpass. Today, he is sober, owns a home, and is taking classes at St. Petersburg College. Another student talked about his journey from homelessness to celebrating six years of sobriety, and returning to St. Petersburg College to complete a degree that he had started many years earlier. This December, he will walk across the stage at graduation, receiving his AA degree, and I told him, we would be there to applaud him. The final snapshot... The final snapshot in the slide today pays a tribute to our veterans. A recent headline in USA Today read, "Veterans Are Trading Their Combat Boots for Business Suits." As veterans return to the college classroom in record numbers, they bring with them a wealth of knowledge and leadership skills that they've learned on the battlefield. Their experience coupled with college education provides them the opportunity to transition from, as some of our SPC billboards say, "The Cubicle" to "The Corner Office." We have 145 veterans taking classes downtown and 30 taking classes at Midtown. On November 10th, we had a very special ceremony honoring our veterans at the Midtown campus. At 8:30 in the morning, standing by the American flag, Army Captain Tracy Shirley, Dr. Hildegard Shirley's daughter, led a heartwarming presentation and celebration in honor of our veterans. This was followed by Gene Simmons' video, "A Patriotic Salute to the Military," where all participants were able to sing along to "Anchors Away" and other official songs of every branch of our military. These student activity events that I have described today are a result of a lot of work and coordination. I have invited two individuals here today to recognize them and thank them for their dedication and service to our students and to St. Petersburg College. Dr. Hildegard Shirley serves as our site administrator for Midtown, and Erin Sinak is our student life and leadership coordinator for Downtown and Midtown. Would you join me in thanking both of them? Thank you. They're not going to be able to stay for the whole thing, but I asked them to stay as long as they could. They're going to be setting up for a Midtown Women on the Way. They're staying. Okay, yes, thank you. We do have a Women on the Way workshop this afternoon at Midtown. To finalize my comments, as we know, our campuses are a microcosm of the larger community. As such, there are those with legal problems, there are those who struggle with substance abuse and alcoholism, there are our veterans who come home and have dreams of their future. We also have students who need an opportunity to hear an orchestra, to go to a concert, to be introduced to the arts. In my opinion, student life and leadership activities should serve to enhance and be an extension of a student's classroom experience. As you've listened today to the recent events we've held at Midtown, and I've given you a handout of our Bayside Brief newsletter for Downtown that describes the events upcoming, I hope that you got a sense that we're working very hard together to provide students with meaningful opportunities to think, learn, and engage in student events, and thereby persist in achieving their academic goals. Thank you.
Hava?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
I'm concerned because you're growing so fast and serving a well-needed population of students that we can't overlook the fact that you're probably overcrowded now from the space that was originally designed. And if you're going to continue the good works that you're doing, we need, as a board, to address space in both of these two facilities. And probably, it's very critical, because it's going to take Susan Reiter, I guess Susan is -- oh, there she is, probably a couple of years to do something. And in the meantime, I don't think we need to turn students away who need the services you're providing. And where we're going to house them, I have no idea, but I would imagine your enrollment's going to keep going. One, your program is good, both at Midtown and Downtown, and it's attracting students. And we just need, I think, very quickly to address how we grow physically these facilities and how we go about them. Because I think it's imperative that we keep this program going, because we're serving students that probably aren't your normal-type students we do on other campuses.
Thank you.
Devron?
Those are perfect comments. It's right along where I was going. I think the board needs to take an action, especially in the Midtown campus. We have possibly some opportunities to grow, but we're going to have to really move fast to acquire some of them, I think, after assessing where we can go. But we also need to do that in the Downtown. I'd just like to add that these are great programs, and that we should be an asset to the community. While doing these programs aren't, you know, in our core mission, they are things that enhance people coming to the campus. It allows for people to be introduced to the campus, and sometimes, in some communities, people are afraid to come to the college campus because they think they're going to sound dumb or not be accepted, but that's not the case. Dr. Olmer, my question, though, is for you, and this is my understanding, is that, one, we are already out of space at Midtown. We've grown out of that, we've outgrown that space, right? Two, is that this time we will have the least amount of remedial courses that we've ever had at the Midtown site. Is that true?
That's absolutely true. I'm happy to say we're having higher-level math classes, microcomputer applications for business, psychology, humanities. And in fact, in our current humanities class, our instructor informed us this week that he's recommending several students in that class to go to honors college because they're doing so well. So, I mean, we do have good news to share, and we have not gotten where we are today without the support of this board and the leadership of this college. And I have great confidence going forward that the same will be true as we go forward.
Not to prolong this, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add this very briefly. These two sites, if we don't expand and we're going -- these are our best recruiting tools right now. Because if you are, it's my understanding that if you're not, if you're taking a class at Midtown, you are probably taking one at Downtown, and then vice versa. And so we're seeing these sites integrate. I hate calling them sites, because I think all of them should be campuses, but with the space requirements, you have to call them sites. Well, I think we need to figure out how to expand these sites. We have a true urban campus in Downtown, where we're right in the middle, thick of everything. And as Dick stated earlier, we have, you know, all kinds of space and parking problems. But in Midtown, I would hate to be turning people away when we're bursting at the seams, and we really need to figure that out. And I've talked to Dr. Law about it. He is 100% behind trying to figure out where we need to go. But I think as a board, we need to take some type of action to figure out there's a possibility to have a gym site, which we don't want to operate a gym. We could get the site and maybe turn it into some classroom space. There's an opportunity to work with the city on a possible site, which, when I talk to Susan and other folks, that may not be the best place because of the retention issues behind Mercy Hospital. But we're going to have to get serious about figuring out how to expand that site, because Dr. Shirley doesn't even have an office most days. They're teaching in there and tutoring in her office when I go down there sometimes. So I would just like to see the board take some type of action very quickly and be serious about it in the next month or so. Maybe we need to have Susan give us some type of report with Dr. Law.
Devron, I think that's, and this is at least my interpretation of item 7E3, is the master plan that we're doing on each of these areas. Because the master plan is supposed to blend what we project as student enrollment with what the needs are of these facilities. And the enrollment is, I would assume that the Office of, what's that Office that you headed up when you were here? Institutional research does, has a good idea based on graduation rates from high school, based on economics of the community, where the growth is going to take place, and then puts it with these master plans. The only problem I have is we have four different architectural firm, and I hope that there's a, somehow, we mesh these master plans together, because I don't want to govern by, and our job is to set policy, by anecdotal story. We need to see exactly where we are on each of these areas, because I'm in Seminole, I could make a compelling case for the Seminole campus and our growth there that has taken place, and the needs that exist there, and the Clearwater campus. So I just don't want to say this is, I mean, we have to have the facts which show, and I don't know what those facts will show, but I'm hoping these master plans will show us what the facts will show as to where the needs are on each of these areas and what we're currently at capacity and where the potential exists. Mr. Johnston?
Mr. Chairman, I might disagree with you a little bit there. I think there's an emergency situation at both Midtown and Downtown. The master plan, before it gets kicked off, is another two years, and then you're going to have another couple of years of figuring it all out. I think we've got some emergencies that we need to address immediately, both at Midtown and Downtown. And I know that there are other areas, but other campuses that we have don't have the growth potential that I think these two facilities do. And I think I'll follow Devron here, that I think this board maybe need to get ahead of the master plan a little bit and say, "We've got some real concerns here," because we're getting success. And I listened last night to a young man who was Chinese, and he said, comparing China and America, and one of his four things was education. And we are just not educating our people in the manner that we need to. And you talked about the success of people that are coming, that have credentials that need to move on. Well, that just, that breeds itself. So I'm all in favor of telling the master plan ahead of time, where I think, as a board member, I know we need to address some things. One, the economy's on real estate in both these areas is probably depressed, and now's the time, if we're going to acquire property, it's the time to do it. And I would suggest that this board make these two facilities a real priority, so they can move forward as quick as possible.
Devron?
Mr. Chairman, I do agree with you that we should be a part of the master plan process, but I have to agree with Dick here. I think we should deviate from that a little bit, and here's why. Seminole and Clearwater campus were never in jeopardy of being shut down. Our site in Midtown, if you don't remember too far along ago, was in jeopardy of being closed. Now it's bursting at the seams. If we had not taken an action at that particular time, we wouldn't even have this site. So what I'm asking is not to deviate from the master plan process, but that the board take specific action in asking to help Dr. Law. There may be an opportunity, like the JWB building came available, for us to move forward with other sites. And I want us to be able to do that in Downtown and in Midtown, if those sites could come available without tying his hands, or Susan's hands, or whoever's hands. But we need to be about the business of getting them more space. If we're bursting at the seams, I do believe that we still should go through the master planning process, because I think we have to have a long-term visionary goal of where that site or campus will end up and what it needs to look like. But if there are opportunities for us to grab, do a land grab, and get us more space in those particular sites, I think we need to figure out how to do that as a board now, rather than two years down the road. Because two years down the road, the price is only going to get higher, number one, and number two, we may not have that opportunity.
Mr. Brett?
I completely agree with Devron. I'm all about measuring and the strategic plan, it all sounds great. There's a huge symbolic portion of this formula that we have to keep our eyes on in Midtown and our investment in the community. And I think it's been a roller coaster ride, it seems like, and we need to make sure that it's going to be on the right track for a long time. And I support it 100%.
I think that we ought to inquire about acquiring these properties. I don't know where the finances are going to come from, but I think it'd be a good idea to do that now when the prices are so low.
Would it be practical for, because it appears that the majority of this board is thinking that way, to ask administration to come back with, in a very short period of time, with some proposals of how we would address this question?
Is the idea to focus on Midtown, or is the focus on Midtown and Downtown?
I think you need to focus on both of them, because both of them are, they're tied together, as I'm understanding, with a lot of students using both, and they may have slightly different programs, but they're both appear to me to be something that the students need and are using, and using to a much greater degree than, say, the other campuses, the other full campuses. And if that's the case, and that's where the demand is, and we're here strictly to serve students, then we need to address this particular question and do it pretty quickly.
Dr. Law, I guess my question is, do we have, how do we measure capacity at each of our centers and campuses? And where are those figures on each of those campuses and to measure capacity?
I'm chagrined that the amount of work that we've done is not obvious to the board, because it has, I have invested as much time in facilities planning as any other item since I'm here. Let me see if I can't take a second to sort of get your anxiety back in channels and then meet your needs. Every one of the campuses, starting last summer, started a process to identify what they believe is their growth plan for programmatic kinds of things, student space needs, other kinds of things. Along the way, we hired an external firm to do some very hard analysis of the student flow. It's very difficult to understand where students will likely show up for us, so we have people literally who do this for a living helping us. I don't think we have the capacity to do, we can say how many grads came out of the high school, that's the easy part. What happens next with returning adults and online and all those things? In the case of the two instances we're talking about, we met just last week in my office, and I will tell you, the ability to project that is pretty arcane. We do not have much capacity, and we spent a good deal of time as to how we would identify next needs. Downtown, with the acquisition of the FIM space and the space we built, we can, I'll be amazed if we can't meet needs for the next year or two while we're, I don't think we need two years to figure out a master plan, but certainly six months, we can open next summer with plenty of space and availability at Downtown. That is not my, that one's not keeping me awake at night. Midtown's a very different animal. We have, again, just so you understand, we've done the work, Susan has been, we have now reviewed every parcel of land nearby, who owns it, what the access to it might be, its zoning capacity. I mean, we've done all of the, sort of, the down and dirty due diligence. I'm dying to make an acquisition, but once you do it, you have to figure out where's, what happens next. It's not the next acquisition, it's the one after that that matters, okay? So if we buy a building that's across the street and down the block, have we made a commitment then that that's the future direction for us, those kinds of things? We can move those discussions forward and bring them to you. There's no, you have as much background experience as anyone on the staff in those, and those are board decisions. You see on the board agenda this time, we have outlined faculty for the first time, full-time faculty for Downtown Midtown. I think we're on a really good timeline. They're moving really fast. I'm happy to pick up the pace a little bit to meet the board's needs, but please do not think that we've been sitting back with nothing happening. I mean, we have been moving very deliberately in all of this.
I don't want to put words into your mouth, but let me make sure I heard correctly, okay? And I'm not just trying to rearrange the words you said, but did I hear you correctly that you don't think the Downtown campus is on an emergency need for space right now?
I don't view them as emergency need at all.
Okay, so do you think the master plan, planning process can work with the Downtown campus, and we can wait to get an assessment based on that?
I want to be sure, just so that we're not playing games here. The master planning process has been to bring to you by late spring the plan for each of the campuses going forward, so that you had all the campuses in one place at one time, and you could see the whole mosaic. That was the guidance that I certainly perceived from what the board wanted to do. It's a complex picture, so that we would be bringing board wants to do. It's a complex picture, so that we would be bringing all of this forward, talking about short-term and long-term acquisitions and directions in each of those cases. We can accelerate that in any given case, I'm not being intransigent here, but that was the game plan, was to work.
On the midterm, Midtown site, though, you do consider that a more pressing need as far as a look to do something immediately. Is that correct?
I have not had that discussed, nobody has told me that we're out of space there. We bought more space and added some additional classrooms as well. I don't, it has grown. I'd like to take a look before I declare that it's out of space, okay? I just, trust but verify. What's our use? How many courses are we adding in there? What's the growth plan? It's tight, there's not much space there. So if we're not out of space right away, we'll be out of space very soon.
I guess, and then just, the Midtown site needs to be looked, is that, can we all agree to that part, that the Midtown site that needs to be accelerated as far as the look at on that? Why don't we have a motion to that effect then? Devron, would you like to make a motion to that?
I'd like to make a motion that we ask Dr. Law to come back with a report on the Midtown site situation in terms of growth.
Second?
And do you think we can get that by December?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I think that's really all that we're asking, is to focus on where our most critical nature are, and I'm sure we're dealing more with emotions than we are with numbers sitting on the board.
Your efforts are well received, at least if I sound offensive about them, only because we're working hard.
Yeah, you can bring back the statistic to support the move, because that's really your job. We're trying to respond, I think, to what we perceive as a community need. And we're doing it probably because of what we observe and see and people we talk to, which may not be as exacting, because we don't know all that you know, and that's your job anyways.
And they don't know what we've already got in the works. I think there's a legitimate thought. I mean, we've added science labs, we're adding, we've added two or three new classrooms. When FIM vacates, we get all of that downstairs space. We've already talked about repurposing that, additional student services space. We're okay for a couple of years. That part's going to work, okay? Devron, Midtown's a different discussion and worthy of our best.
Yeah, let me add this by saying, one is, you know, I have a big concern, because remember where we were a couple of years ago with Midtown. We cannot move backwards on that campus, I'm just going to say that. And that has nothing to do with Dr. Law, he was not here. Number two, this man has been, made himself available, I've probably called him probably more than anybody, I think, and he's made himself available not only to go down and visit, to look at sites, listen to, you know, he has exhausted every possibility. I just want to make sure that if a site comes available, or an opportunity comes available at the Midtown campus, that we can move forward very quickly as a board, and he can, at his level, to make sure that we can expand that. I'm not saying the gym's the right place, because I don't know. And he and I have had that discussion. We don't know if it will work, because it still gives us some parking problems, along with how many classrooms you really can get in there. But there may be some opportunity with Cityland and some other stuff, but I want him to be able to have the opportunity to move forward.
So under the long term down there, you know, it may be that we're renting those facilities now, that we just look at a, making a move to acquire a building that's bigger, with more land around it, that has the future potential of creating a real center there, rather than a site, Devron, that would better serve the area.
No good deed goes unpunished. All of the improvements we made in the building showed up in the new appraisal for the building. The cost of the building went up after we made improvements in the building, as leasehold kinds of things, so.
So the cost just went up?
There's a motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded. The motion, Kim, would you please restate the motion?
Dr. Law to bring back a report on the Midtown situation in terms of growth.
Okay, that's a good motion, and I think this is also the proper role of the board. We're to set the priority, it's up to Dr. Law to submit to us the plan. We're not to come up with the plan as to which buildings we buy, or how we go about it. That's Dr. Law's responsibility as college president. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Unanimous, motion carries. And Devron, I think it is important to show that this board is committed to the, to the Midtown campus, and we certainly are by that motion. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, on, just on logistics, the report on student success this month was really just a process report. I think my time would be better spent postponing that.
Yeah, that sounds good. And Kay, is that fine with you?
No, no.
But thank you. Any old business, seeing none, we'll move on to new business. I'll entertain a motion to approve items C and D.
I so move.
Second, the motion's been made and seconded. I just have one quick question. The City of Clearwater Human Trafficking Investigation Training, how did this all come about? Usually we don't get grants from cities.
As you know, we have a significant presence and capability in human trafficking training. They are utilizing our resources in some specific work they want to do, especially in the Mexican community in the City of Clearwater, and ask for us to put that together for them.
Very good. That's a meeting being responsive of community need, and we certainly appreciate that. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. I would entertain a motion that we approve items E, 1 through 3.
Second. I mean, so moved, sorry.
Second, second.
Motion's been made by Devron, seconded by Evelyn. Any questions? Obviously, the selection process, the master planning college, why we've touched on, do you have any further comments on that, Dr. Law?
Susan's doing a great job of this.
Susan, any comments on that?
No, I think we're ready to go.
Okay, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to back up just for a second. The D2.
There is nothing there. D2? Oh, did you say E2?
D2, D2. I've got a question about the, D2 we've already approved, right?
Right.
I think we should, but Susan, if we're going to have...
He's 1B, he meant.
What are you talking about?
1B.
D1B. I got it right now. I'm pointing to it, so I just can't read. That's the case where we're going to put walkie-talkies, or radios, or what have you, in the hands of probably the provosts?
We have actually purchased very similar type of radios under this grant in the past that you have approved. And what this grant does is it enhances the number of radios that we have, college-wide, that we can use in the case of an emergency or any type of situation.
Right.
Put some repeaters on buildings.
And I totally agree with it, but I was just concerned that if they're turned over to the provosts, and the provosts go home five o'clock, they're useless from 5 to 9 or when the classes are over. Could the provosts turn those over to somebody else for evening classes in case there's a need for emergency?
We actually have radios that speak to these radios, that the evening, either site administrator and/or security folks have. So until we actually shut the campus down at night and go home, there is the ability to communicate with all of these radios, college-wide.
Because I was just concerned about faculty and students that are there later in the day that may not have a way of communicating.
It's not just the provosts that have them presently, we have security that have these radios, the ability to communicate. This is just an enhancement.
Thank you, that was just my only concern.
Good. And thank you, Dick, for those questions. I know you've been an advocate for our security on campus, and it is appreciated that you look into those matters. We have a motion to approve E, 1 through 3, it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Item 5, Susan?
This, this project is the addition to the parking lot at the St. Pete Gibbs campus, and it really is, is a change order to a parking lot upgrade project that we have shown in yellow here initially. We've finally been able to get rid of, donate, all of the portables on the site except for the large collegiate high school portable, and we're using that portable for some business office functions. So this project will proceed. In addition to that, as the board memo states, we're going to be able to go in and redo this, the west parking lot. We're going to correct some of the ingress and egress on that lot, which is very problematic. We have some deterioration of drainage structures on that lot along Fifth Avenue, which are problematic. And, you know, we'll reseal it and stripe it, get better flow, and pick up additional parking spaces, 50, 55 parking spaces. We're also going to put some solar lighting in there and try that instead of having to pay for the electricity for the parking lot light, so.
A minimal application of solar, not all of the poles.
Any questions on item 5? Is there a motion to approve item E5? Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Devron. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve items F and G? Motion's been made by Mr. Brett, seconded by Devron. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Public hearing is now called to order. Are there any public comments on item H? Seeing none?
Yes.
You're not public comment. You get to ask, go ahead.
Okay. What was the necessity that was behind all this?
I think, well, Dr. Law, you'll answer that.
Yes, as we, we're trying to, on a continuous basis, clarify board rules from college procedures. You currently find both are mechs at the same time. So every time you want to change a procedure, it comes to you in the form of a board rule. So what you will see then is board rules that say the president is authorized to create appropriate rules and procedures for the sound operation of travel. And then we handle procedures as administrative niceties, you have assigned the board the responsibility to the president. So you'll see us over time. The president was identified as 216 times having to approve something. Most of those are administrative matters, not board rules.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Then we'll have, entertain a motion, approved. H, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Devron. I didn't have that motion already, did I? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Item I is for the financial report. We have that, I'll ask unless there's any pressing questions, we defer our questions till next month. Is that fine?
That's a good plan.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Sid, appreciate that. Item J, K, and L, is there a motion to approve J, K, and L?
I so move.
By Mrs. Zellerakis, seconded by Mr. Johnston. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Item M, Dr. Law, I think we need to hear about this.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
In a good way, I mean, I just, I think this is something that we just...
There are two parts.
We just can't move along with, we need to...
All in favor. You, Mr. Chairman, if memory serves, at the August board meeting, asked me to review our, the college's process for namings, to reiterate all of the namings that...
I'm sorry, Dr. Law, item M.
I'm sorry, I'm on the, already getting to the more important parts. This institution, like many others, finds itself, again, we talked about growth, this institution has grown, I think about 30% over the last three years is the number. Everybody has struggled with finances. Long and short is, we have not been as dutiful at replacing faculty as vacancies came, and keeping our adjunctive full-time ratios where we would view them as optimum. And again, you talk about 70% or 60% full-time faculty, 30 or 40% adjuncts. My plan is to identify the way that we can get back on track for this over the next, certainly two years is what you have in front of us, if, depending on the legislature, it might be three. What I'd like to do, though, is to assure the board, I'm asking you to approve $400,000 in new positions today. That would be the first draw on our budget for July 1. Once we go forward with this, we will go ahead, get to the front of the hiring line, rather than the end of the hiring line, employ our faculty and staff to be proactive in all of this, use this as planning for our academic programs. Please rest assured, I have identified the $400,000 in this year's budget if we don't have new money to do it next year. So our exposure is essentially zero. I'd like to go ahead, though, with the advertising, so that we can get faculty involved in January, early February, do the interviews, so that we can, candidates, do those in February, March, bring you the approval process in April, bring people aboard earlier rather than later. And faculty and deans have been very proactive in helping us do this.
I want to applaud you for this plan, because before, we basically operated on a crisis mode to hire faculty. This is a more organized, procedural-based way of hiring faculty, so that they're in here, that they're, match up with our class offerings, with the set class offerings, as under your provision of offering a set schedule for the whole year academically. So this is just, to me, a win-win plan all the way around. So it's, and I know at the, your meeting with the faculty, that this issue came up, and certainly is, again, it's addressing a faculty concern, that we're doing this in a more organized, structured way, that makes sense for our students, so that the faculty member here knows where, how this school operates before they are thrown into the classroom. And it's just a win all the way around. So I applaud you.
This is an attractive opportunity for faculty across the country, and in the region we have a lot. The idea that we would wait until July or August, after everybody has made their choices and been hired elsewhere, seems to me to be folly. We're too good for this to be the way we're doing it.
Devron, you had a comment or something?
Quickly, this is the reason we brought Dr. Law here. He's on the cutting edge of this, he understands how to do this. So I'd like to make the motion that we accept this plan and item M.
Thank you, Devron. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dick. Any further discussion?
I just had one question. This, this plan assumes that we're going to continue to grow, and grow, and grow, and we know that's not going to be the case. We're going to have some falloff in student demand somewhere along the way. And I assume that this plan has some provisions in that, when you anticipate the economy gets better and everybody goes to work, we won't have the demand here at the school.
And you're right on. By the way, the little nomenclature within the position request is the percent of courses, full-time, percent adjunct. So you see many of those numbers are below 50% full-time, which is what the critical need is. But even at our best, we're going to have 30 or 40% of the coursework taught by adjunct instructors, and that's more than a sufficient cushion for us to measure the ups and downs, Mr. Johnson. But good insight, that's true.
Also, there'll be retirements.
There'll be additional retirements. There's a stunningly low number of retirements this year, a stunningly low number.
There may be a lot of people entering drop before next June, with legislation.
Well, thank you for your support. It's really important for the board to send its signal on this.
I think we are committed to this. We have voted on, but I think we're committed to it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. And board members, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to be expeditious on this, but please, if you have a comment, we want to hear it. So don't feel like I'm rushing through your comments. If I feel that way, I apologize.
No, we'll speak up.
Good, we want to do. Now for the item, President's Report on the naming policy, please.
Thanks. Sorry, I had jumped ahead. You had asked some time ago, I want to say about 90 days ago, for us to take a review of this. We have gone and inventoried every name. In fact, put a, just put some of the photos up as we're talking, but there's a great number. Obviously, an 84-year-old institution has already made a lot of naming commitments, and many of them are good. You see, you know, I tried to pick some that are in every wrench. Here's one that's very prominent. The naming is there. Mr. Cruth gave that money some time ago. If we go to some of the others, this is the Dennis Jones Building out at Seminole, very appropriate nomenclature, certainly well-deserved. Things fall off. This is the sign for the Tom Gregory Ethics Institute. Naming, and again, the honor is there, but the portrayal doesn't quite, and I think the next one is Mr. Johnson, who's kind of about halfway. You see under the TE, the W. Richard Johnston Technical Building.
Well, that's good, at least it's, at least it's there.
It's observable and discernible, and we're happy to do that.
It'd be nice the other side of the building, too.
We're in the, and then, go ahead, there's one or two else. Cecil Keane, a beloved part of our college's history. In some cases, all we have is a plaque like this in parts around, and I think perhaps that could be enhanced. that could be enhanced. Here's the one that I use as sort of my speaking point, that plaque is, as you walk in, that commemorates Don Sullivan epicenter. I suggest we might want to find a better place to put Senator Sullivan's name on the building. But again, all were done in the right spirit, all done in the right time, events just have us with a... I've proposed a policy that outlines two things, honorary and philanthropic, that's what you would suspect, we have, philanthropic is a little easier through our foundation, those namings, and they would have certain levels of gifts that would make sense. You retain the final authority in every single case. Nothing will get named that doesn't come past you, for a motion and a second and a vote of this board, okay? At the same time, there's a process attendant to it, where the process gets vetted to make sure that it's appropriate, that the name is reflective, and that things come to you in a form that have had some vetting. So, the naming policy outline with your guidance will translate that into board rule and some other processes. Mr. Chairman?
I had two items that I wanted to bring up, what's been suggested. First of all, I thank you for this work, because I know this is sensitive, I know it's also just hard to put our hands around this thing, but, and maybe my fellow board members will disagree with me on this. Additionally, under honorary, additionally, they must have achieved outstanding distinction through service to the college, community, or nation. And it's my personal feeling, and there was a time back in the, I think, 90s, when President Reagan died, that let's, you know, there was actually an effort through a group, let's name everything we can for President Reagan, and I love President Reagan, okay? And they renamed Reagan National, which was very appropriate, a building, but bridges around the country and things like that. And as much as I love President Reagan, I think the buildings on this college should be named for people who have a direct effect on St. Petersburg College. I don't want to get into just naming for, you know, national leaders, I'd rather have people who have some tie to St. Petersburg College. So, I would like to see almost like a, if we can look at the policy, and the idea is here's discussion, it's not to adopt this policy today, but maybe consider that, and I don't want to exclude us from doing that, but I just want to say, the top priority should be people tied to St. Petersburg College. Then, the next priority is people tied to the community, next priority be people of national prominence. That doesn't mean that we can't do that, if we want to name a building for President Reagan, or whoever in the future, that gives us the right to do it, it's not against our policy, but really, that's almost like a third tier. Our first tier would be people who have a direct connection with St. Petersburg College, and that's just my opinion on that one.
I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
The other item is the, I think this, the committee, I like the idea, I think, though, it binds the president too much, because it says the committee will consist of. I like a, this is a suggested process for the committee, because here are one thing, we have a representative of the occupants of the building to be named. We may be asking a committee to come up with what's the appropriate building to be named, so we don't even know who the occupant, you know, which building we're talking about at this time. I see your effort here, but I'd rather see, if we wanted, let's say, name something for some, you know, person, that the committee, you know, the structure wouldn't allow that if we're saying, you also suggest which building you think's the most appropriate for us, so, and you may want, based on different circumstance, a different group of players involved. You may even want at times a community player, a community member to sit on this, a foundation member, or whatever, so, and that foundation is on here, but the executive director, but you may, community more, so I would say, let's, my suggestion is leave more discretion to you to say, here's the suggestion list, but it can change at the president's discretion, with disclosure to the board, or something, if you want something like that.
Maybe, I would agree with that, just giving him more discretion, but also, every year, we have a person that's on the board that worked with the Alumni Association, maybe that, maybe that the only seat that's on there, that we have to have on there. That way, you have somebody from the board that represents the board in that.
That's a good idea, too.
Since we're already appointing those people to work with the subcommittee, or to work with the foundation, then allow that individual to sit on there for sure, and that's it. The rest of them can be picked.
Or we can just say, a board member, and as the meeting goes, someone could volunteer to sit on at that time.
Well, I thought about the same thing, because I looked at this, and I said, maybe a board member should sit on here, in some capacity.
That's it, I wouldn't do more than that.
I think we all just committed to more of a process, so that we all get to the same place with this process.
I think what you've done here, Dr. Law, is put together a good package to start with, and we can fine-tune that as we're going down the road. Don't have to do it this morning.
Other suggestions, Devron?
No, but I do agree with Mr. Chair, I just, I don't want to put the president in a position where his hands are tied, and give him as much discretionary discretion as he needs to move forward with the process, so sometimes it'll have to be very quick, which I don't want you to have to, you know, and sometimes it won't, I mean, so...
Evelyn, did you have any comments on this policy?
No.
Then, Dr. Law, do you want to bring us back a policy?
Bring back in board rule form.
In board rule form, and I know that probably takes a couple months, because of the way it works.
We'll get it done.
Ever we get it done, that's great.
Mr. Chairman, there was a second part of your request, and can I take a minute or two to brief the board? You had also, I think, very appropriately asked, how can, about former presidents, and then how would we best honor Dr. Cutler at the college by a naming testimony? So, we've spent some good time doing that. It ties to our prior discussion on master planning as well, I might add, and I see an opportunity coming over the horizon that's not quite ready for my presentation to you, but of all the facilities on all of the campuses, the one that is most in need of replacement is that administrative complex at the corner of 66th Street and 5th Avenue. It is our most ancient building, as I had, I said to you in private, if we owned it, if it was our house, we would no longer put money into it. The slab is starting to give way underneath it. And what I'd like to do is, is with, you see what a nice facility, 12 million dollars or so can create, that you think of a monumental facility like the one you looked at today for Clearwater. What I'd like to do is to, within the next 60 days perhaps, work with our architects, Susan has already started some of that process, to see if we can then give you a plan that would replace, maintain some parts, but replace at the corner of 66th Street and 5th Avenue, the student services and administrative parts of those facilities. We have already made a commitment to name the administrative part of that for Jim Hendry and his service here. I think we have a wonderful opportunity to put Dr. Cutler's name on something that honors his term here in the student services, and in the bigger picture of that corner. So, I'd like to, I think it represents a strong commitment to him, I think it's a fitting monument to his service, I think it's an absolutely necessary thing. You know Carl was the student body president here, I mean, I can't think of a better connection, and we would work very hard to keep the heritage flavor of that building, but it can no longer serve its purpose, it's really...
Where is that building?
The naming opportunity would be prominent at the corner of both 5th Avenue and 66th Street.
Yeah, it is the one right on the corner of 66th Street and 5th Avenue, it's where Karen White's, the provost's office is there. We would keep Lynch Auditorium, in fact, Lynch Auditorium is one, we don't have a name on it, okay? We have this beautiful retrofitted facility, so that came up during our search, but it honors then Dr. Hendry, Dr. Lynch, Dr. Cutler, we have a building. You see how you can make the two facades, so the front facade on 5th Avenue might very well have all the flavor of the heritage, the entry portal and those kinds of things. The 66th Street side could look more like a more modern and collegiate kind of facility. So, if, unless you're a post, I'd like to put a little more time and energy into that and bring you a plan in January, February, for us to then move forward with that plan.
Devron?
I think it's good, but I had thought about the Congressional.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I had thought about the Congressional Institute, but I don't know what's better, because it was his idea.
Let me add a thought to that, the Congressional Institute is gonna be in Seminole, and...
Oh, you can't see it.
And I like the fact that Dr. Cutler, first of all, has lived his whole life in St. Pete, went to St. Pete High School, and was a student at that campus, so he has a direct tie to that campus, and I think that the prominence of being on 5th Avenue and 66th Street, with the name being visible from the street, is an important factor there, too.
Yeah, I agree with that, I agree with that.
So, we don't need a motion today.
No.
Just your guidance, if you have a direction.
Move forward, but Devron, you had some comments?
No, that was it, I was wanting, he answered it when he said he was gonna bring it back formally, so I like the idea, I think it's perfect.
I think this is an excellent idea, because I think the community is still waiting for us to respond in some manner for his many, many years of service and dedication to this institution, and what he's done. And so, I think this would work out very, very well, and very, very appropriate, and I think your comments, Dr. Law, are right on, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Terry?
I agree.
We'll stay with you.
I think you have concurrence from the board.
Thank you very much.
Can Bea wait till next month?
Yes, in fact, I'd like to do...
I'm sorry about that, Ann.
That's for your edification, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, for all our board members here, is there a motion to move the February, regularly scheduled meeting from February 15th to February 22nd, and to move the April 19th meeting to April 26?
Some move.
The motion's been made and seconded to move both meetings, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Dr. Law, I want to congratulate you on being accepted to the Boston Marathon once again.
That was my last excuse. How many years is this now? This will be the sixth time I have been to Boston Marathon, okay?
Excellent.
He better win if he...
No. Maybe for his age bracket.
Don't ask him to push, you know.
Is there any other business to be brought before the board? I do have one item, I just wish, I think, Devron, I want to thank you for the way our meeting got started today with the student from Clearwater High School, and hearing her story, and I think it's appropriate that this time and next week, we'll be celebrating Thanksgiving, and it is a time to count our blessings. And we are so blessed to have a wonderful faculty at this college, a wonderful career staff, great administration, a president who's leading the way here, and we have students who we are thankful for, that they give us the opportunity to help them out, and work to improve their lives, and they're committed to changing their lives. So, I just want to thank all of you for all you do throughout the year during this time of Thanksgiving. Thank the Lord for the many blessings he's given all of us, and today with the story from the student, we're reminded the many, many blessings we have. And so, God bless us all, and thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ken, thank you for the meeting today. We did a lot.